Good morning. It's nine o'clock. I've called the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order here. It is Thursday, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And about the agenda, action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. Avoid meeting disruptions. Please place your cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during this meeting. Board reserves the right to take items in different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable, may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of County Commissioners convening as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Line Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. And this meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. Roll call. We have Commissioner Jacobson, Commissioner Hendricks, Commissioner Henderson, and myself, Commissioner Rock Day in chambers, and we have Commissioner Keller on Zoom. The invocation will be given by Thomas Walburn of the Sweetwater Christian Fellowship. Please rise.
Let us, let us fit an attitude prayer. This morning, Lord, we ask for your forgiveness. We ask you, Lord, that you would again give us forgiveness and repentance. I ask you to come together tonight, or today, just to be with us, or we know that our society has done everything in its power, dear Jesus, to take you out of our schools, out of our government, and out of our constitution. I ask you this morning, Lord, to empower those in the commission to stand firm on the constitution that they took their oath to uphold. Our nation was founded on strong Christian Judeo principles, Lord. As a nation, we need to get back to those basic, basic proven principles. Help us once more become one nation under God with liberty and justice for all. And Lord, we know it begins right here, right here in this very room, not only with these elected officials, but with each and every one of us, dear God. I ask that you anoint them, that they may look to you for wisdom and for knowledge. Lord, we're thankful. We're thankful for those who have given their time and their talents and equipment to help the flood, prevent the floodwaters from here in Urington. I ask you, Lord, to be with our sheriff's department and all first responders. Keep them safe from harm. May your light, Lord, continue to shine here in Lyon County and on our nation. And we ask, Lord, for your power, your wisdom, and courage to perform the task that you have given each and every one of us today. Intend to you, Lord, you and you only, Lord, to be give all glory and praise. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Hendricks, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Please join me.
Thank you. All right, we'll start off with public participation. It will actually be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Is anticipated the public participation be held at this time, but may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation or ask to state their names for this record will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. Afterwards, please print your name at the clerk's desk. Do we have any? Okay. Mrs. Shek.
Mary Ann Shek, I live in, in Stagecoach. I, I wanted to, to, to mention this because I think it's something that should be in the minutes that should be addressed by, by all citizens of Lyon County. I'm sure that you're all aware that the school district, which I know you don't have lead, well, you may have leadership because, just because you're all leaders, but the school district is limiting, is proposing to limit severely public comment at the school board meetings. And that means parents, citizens, taxpayers of Lyon County, all who you represent in a different way are being limited in what they can, in how they can express their opinion. Unlike this board who has public comment on every agenda item. I don't know if there's anything that can be done from, from the perspective of the county to influence the school board. But if you have any of that influence and you are all leaders in the county, and this, what happens in the school district and how it affects the citizens and their children and the taxpayers of Lyon County is, is, is very important. So I don't, whether individually you have any influence, but if you do, I hope you stand beside those citizens that you represent in trying to avert this horrible limitation of public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? One online. Okay, we have Mr. Brennan.
All right. Good morning. Amanda Brennan, B R I N N A N D. And I just wanted to give a big thank you to the county employees and the road department for their actions during these kind of unusual flood events. I also wanted to thank Commissioner Hendricks for contacting people in her area, trying to find out the conditions of the road. It was kind of an unusual event, and I just think the county stepped up and did a great job and just wanted to thank them. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, if not, we're going to move to item five for possible action review and adoption of the agenda. Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda or any removal of items? Okay, we have Mr. Haskin.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to pull item thirteen C. I'm supposed to make a presentation to the Stagecoach Advisory Board. I was planning on doing that before this item got on and I ended up not being able to. So I'd like to move that to the next meeting. So that I make that presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with the exception of pulling fifteen C as presented.
Thirteen C.
Thirteen C. I'm sorry, my hearing, I need hearing. It's thirteen C.
Second.
Anybody have any comments in the public? Any other comments from commissioners? What's that? Oh, okay, yes.
Leslie Sane from Smith Valley requesting item twelve M, the contract extension for RCI people.
On the consent agenda, we will, we'll go ahead and do that when we get to the consent agenda too.
And that was twelve M?
Yes.
Twelve M. So all right. So no further comment or pulling of items and have a, we have the motion and a second.
Oh, second.
Okay.
Oh, you did.
That's all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I don't see Mr. Commissioner Keller. I see a hand up, so that must mean that we're good. Yeah. Commissioner Keller, does the hand up mean that you're an aye or an aye?
The hand up was to unmute me from the county so that I can mute myself. And it's, it's I'm voting for it. Yes.
Okay, you're going for it. Sounds like a plan. So we have five zero. And we will proceed on six time certain, we have time certain at nine AM for presentation only, presentation update from Walker and Associates on the eighty-second session of the Nevada Legislature. So we have the Walkers, if they'd like to come up and present that for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very nice to be here today. Nice to see you. The good news is the legislature is over. The second special session ended last night and the A's did get their bill. So we're going to be bringing the A's to Southern Nevada. Just a couple things. In total, we did monitor four hundred and thirty-three bills for our three counties. And the governor still has an opportunity to veto bills. So as we see some of them being vetoed, we will come and, and inform you about that. There is a couple of them that we're really hoping he's going to veto. It was a difficult session, but I think overall, we, from where we started, where we are today, we're in much better position. We were able to get eighty-five one eight passed. That was an indigent defense bill. But what I was able to do is to come up with some support and help for our district attorneys, our judges, and our public defenders who have had to grapple with that forty-eight hour rule, have to have a for, within forty-eight hours of someone's arrest, which means our, these folks are working holidays and weekends with, with no additional pay. So we tried for most of the session to change, get that forty-eight hours changed to seventy-two hours to exclude holidays, the weekends to, however, and they just wouldn't budge. So the only option we had was try and come up with a monetary solution, which I did. It's in the, the, the last couple of pages of our report. And in total, it's about a million and a half per year of state funding so that we can pay a stipend for the district attorneys, and that includes our elected district attorney and as well as our judges and our public defenders. So hopefully this will help them a lot. Also, the important thing is they can use that money to hire somebody to come in and fill in so they can actually have a weekend off. So that's, and I am working, I worked a lot with your comptroller, Josh Foley on it, and he's well aware. I talked to him again and have worked very closely with your county manager and on that. AB sixty-eight, the China Springs apportionment bill and state funding of the China Springs budget was accomplished. Four hundred thousand of that China Springs budget is only for a two-year period and the state is estimating that we, counties would have to pick that up in two years from now. Um, the SB twenty-one Naco Pop Cat Bill, I was able to get an amendment there so that your school district can continue to get the resident construction tax funding. So we were happy about that. Also, some of the, the bad, bad bills, AB one seventy-two on collective bargaining, we were able to get that changed. It's app, or only to schools. AB two ninety-two jail inmate gender identity, that doesn't affect us any longer. It's only state prisons. So we were able to do that. The homeless type of bills that we had, they're either dead or they were pretty well modified, so it doesn't really affect us. And I know that was one of the concerns. SB two three three, that's on the equipment, the rental equipment taxes, in particular, assessors were very much against it because it really caused two tier of and taxation and not equal taxation, but that was killed. And that was Clark and Washer who really worked on that one. SB three oh four, that's the National Fire Protective Association fire equipment would require us to have NFPA standards on, on our fire equipment and fire stations, which would have cost us a tremendous amount of money. SB three three eight on OHV, that was Senator Flores' bill that would have taken away our authority to regulate OHVs. In the end, he totally gutted it, and now it's just definitions. So we're happy with that. One of the big ones was killing SB four three two, that was the sweep of the Tesla property tax, and it would have been swept from Story County. But that does have a lot of implications for you if you have these types of large projects. The governor's office has stated they want to meet with us starting this summer to talk about future projects, and that's something I think that Lyon County is going to be very interested in. So we'll have to, you know, deal with that one this summer. We are, we, hopefully, hopefully, we will have vetoes on SB eighty-one, regional planning, and SB two two six, that's on prevailing wage. We looked at that one again and again and again, and it looked like it was just going to affect private companies, private property at the very last couple of days of the session that that bill was gutted and we put in that is now going to affect lease purchases. I don't know if you do lease purchases or installment type of purchasing of buildings. And so if you might want to look at that, we're hoping the governor will be there then. The, the one that we missed, we tried very, very hard was the elected salary bill. The elected officials have not had a salary agent over six years. It means that it'll be eight years by the time we go back to next session. We tried it with SB fifty-one, and we had two amendments there. Both of them were killed. At the very end of the session, we tried one more time. Under AB five two nine, we went to Minority Leader PK O'Neill to see if he could put in, they had an emergency measure for us, and we did. The last day, couple of days of the session, we were able to get it out of Assembly forty-two to nothing, went over to the Senate, to Senate Finance. We had the votes on a committee, but the chairman did not bring it up for a while, and we tried and tried. Turns out it was it was the majority leader of this. So that was heartbreaking, but we tried very hard on it. So the next week or so, we're going to be creating the final report, particularly after the vetoes are done. And what that report is, is it's a, it's a a report that has all four hundred and thirty-three bills that we monitored, what their disposition is, when they take effect, a link to each bill, which ones died, and we break it down by department. So your comptroller is going to get all the fiscal stuff, your DA is going to get all of his stuff, sheriff will get all his, public works will get theirs, county manager gets everything. So he'll have a figure. So you should have that by the end of, of next week. Over the next eighteen months, what happens is the, the legislature changed the way it does interim, interim committees. Now, the interim committees also let the committees that are outstanding committees during a regular legislative session. Last interim, we monitored twelve committees. And if you're not there in the interim, and I know Commissioner Henderson knows this well, if you're not in there in the interim and being involved in those, and they're making recommendations to the twenty twenty-five legislative session, and you go to this twenty twenty-five session without being involved in the interim, first thing they're going to say is, where were you the last eighteen months? So it's really important to stay involved with that. With that, I'm going to, Steve is going to talk about water. And then we'll take any questions, Mr. Chairman, is that?
Good morning, Chair and Commission. Steve Walker for the record. First off, I would like to thank Lyon County staff for all the input they provided during the session. We can't do it without that input, and, and they were, they were excellent. And, and I want to reach out to them and say thank you very much. Overall, on my focus area, which is water and natural resources, not much happened. There was a budget increase with the state engineer for three million dollars, long overdue. But now he's got to find the staff to get the job done, and that's a challenge. Wage rates the state pays. And some water bills passed, but to me, what the the bill that failed, say more about where we are on water issues in Nevada. Specifically, the ones, a good one that passed is AB twenty. It's a state revolving loan fund. Utilities use that, the SRF money, either as grants and or very low interest loans for improvements. It's federal money. And there is a, it's large increase due to the infrastructure federal legislation. And so they've added a component that's been long needed in Nevada, and that is the, you can find funding through the state financing for water projects for conversion of septic systems to wastewater treatment. And it's been needed for my whole career, thirty years of dealing with it. And because I don't know county in Nevada that doesn't have one acre septic systems that pollute the groundwater with nitrates. And so I think that was probably the, one of the bigger things that happened. There is, AB three twenty-five was a, it was out of TCID, and they asked for a exception for if they want to temporarily change water uses, that they wouldn't have to go through a application process. It, it made sense, but for some reason it didn't pass. AD three eighty-seven was a bill that came out of the interim, interim water committees, there's national resource committees. And it tried to deal with the issue that in Nevada where you have three hundred and fifty-six geographic basins, that some of them are interconnected both by surface water and groundwater. And that there is, they tried to address the Nevada water law, saying that if you have an interconnected basin, then, and you make a new application for a water right, you have to consider all the water rights in all the interconnected basins. It isn't in law right now. It caused a, a real problem in the K- Coyote Springs. Didn't get anywhere. I think it was a very good bill to pass. It would have made our water law less need, less court challenges would have been reduced because of that, but it didn't pass. The, the biggest bill that came out was a Clark County bill, two twenty, and it basically was specific to Southern Nevada Water Authority. It's in the newspapers right now because it also included that if, in fact, the Colorado River Commissioner, the Bureau of Reclamation Control in Colorado River reduces allocations for Nevada, that the, the Southern Nevada Water Authority through their board can also reduce allocation to individual houses and businesses. And they got that law. Furthermore, if it basically says any, any house that's connected to a public water system on the Colorado River that's on a septic system, they're going to get rid of the septic system. They'll pay a hundred percent. Two bills that didn't pass, SB one oh two and SB one seventy-six, they were both sponsored by Senator Gogachia. He was on his last term. And so what he's trying to do with these bills is to get both water planning and water rights dealt with. The SB one oh two would have provided counties funding to complete their mandated water resource plan that's due in two thousand and twenty-nine. Didn't get a hearing. SB one seventy-six was a water right purchase program, retire water rights in, in basins that are both over allocated and overpumped. But it's, to me, state engineers, particularly in the seventies, over allocated go, all permits. It was based on reasoning that, well, they'll fail anyway in their, in their application, and so we'll just give you lots of permits. Well, when they didn't fail, now you have these situations where you have basically a race to the bottom on groundwater. And this bill would have allowed some funding to occur to buy and retire those water rights. And it didn't happen. And it's, it's just we're the driest state in the reunion, but at least in this session, we're all talk no show. And we, and what we need to do didn't happen, and it hasn't happened in a long time. With that, I guess that Mary and I would gladly take questions.
Miss Sharon's questions?
No questions.
Or Mary was.
Okay, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mary, Steve, thank you guys both. I, I know what it really takes to get through a legislative session, especially the last two weeks when it's just crazy and you have to be seventeen places at once and you can't do it. I appreciate all your hard work. I know you guys did the best you could, and you did real good. We could have been hurt badly this session, and, and we weren't. I do want to make note, though, the Naco bill to change the way vacancies on the county commissioner filled. It, it passed both houses and the governor vetoed it for some unknown reason, because it's taken away authority of his, even though vacancies on the city councils are, are filled by the city council, vacancies on school boards, you're filled by school boards. We're still the redhead stepchild, but thank you very much for, for your hard work and rest, relax. Try, try to unwind.
And I would like to echo Steve's comments too. Your staff has just been fantastic. We really appreciate their hard, hard work. And, you know, you know how fast things go, and they were Johnny on the spot getting information to us. And I want to thank Commissioners Rock Day and Henderson for being on our legislative board. We really appreciate your guidance through the session. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Keller. Do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Also, I really appreciate working with you. And every two weeks, we had our meetings and learned a lot about what was going on and, and also your hard work on accomplishing the coordination with us and with the legislators. I know it was tough, and you were working twelve-hour days to get them to at least listen, which is difficult, but thank you very much for your, your efforts. Oh, Commissioner Jacobson.
Just comment. Thank you both very much. And this, my understanding is this our last possible meeting with you folks?
Actually, we were going to retire, and then earlier this year, Story County asked us to stay because they, they, it's the Tesla, they're, you know, inundated with all these attacks, and so we said that we would stay. And we did offer to your county manager, if you want to retain us, we can still stay with the three county coalition if you wish the next two years. But then we're gone.
Then you're gone.
But Story County needs, needs help. They don't have a lot of staff, and, you know, we fought two governors, the last two governors for them and one. But they, we need one more session with them. They, and, and it's going to be really important for you because you're, you're the next county that's going to be getting those big projects. So it's, it's their future. So we, we said we would stay. If you guys wish, we would love to stay with you too. It's your choice.
Well, thank you for that. And I guess my final would be, I agree, we do have wonderful staff here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
What I would like to do at this point is go to item seven for presentation of awards, or sheriff can have all of his personnel head back out and get back to work. Not trying to be a slave driver here, but I know that you're all, y'all have a few things to do out there. Also get Sonya back on retirement.
Sonya seven D.
Ron seven A, her presentation, I want to recognize Sonya Ramali for her thirty-four years of service to the citizens of Lyon County.
Good morning. Lyon County Sheriff Brad Pope for the record and correct. We want to recognize Ms. Sonya Ramali for her thirty-four years of service to the citizens of Lyon County. In a time when loyalty to one employer is so rare, I, I think it's I think it's a special honor to recognize her for 34 years of service to this community. Sonya's worn many hats in our agency, whether it was dispatch, records, civil processing, CCWs. I'm probably missing several things that she's done over the years. But I just want to thank her and know that her personality, her expertise, her knowledge will all be missed. And is already missed within the Lyon County Sheriff's Office. So with that being said, I would, I would like to give Sonya Black in an award and thank her for her service. Does want to grab a picture of the bathroom before we go? Continue to the next one.
We got for presentation only, recognized Lieutenant Tyrell Joyner and Sergeant Eric Cruz-Merce for their action that saved the life of Nick, I guess Nike Tony Reese on April 19th, 2023 and presented with the life-saving award.
Sure. Brad Pope for the record again. This could be a little longer presentation simply because I don't write these. The commander wrote this. Writes this out. On April 17th, 2023, stagecoach resident Nike Tony Reese went missing. On the morning of April 18th, 2023, Lyon County Search and Rescue commenced a search of the desert in the area of Tony Reese's residence. Ground searches were suspended at dusk on April 18th. However, aerial searches continued throughout the night utilizing unmanned aerial vehicles as well as care fly helicopter. Ground searches recommenced the morning of April 19th as aerial searches continued, this time with the assistance of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office Raven Helicopter Unit. As these searches were being conducted, Lyon County Sheriff's Office Lieutenant Tyrell Joyner was leading the Sheriff's Office Investigations Division in the missing person case. Detective Sergeant Eric Cusmers arrived for duty on April 19th and learned of the search for Tony. With great tenacity, Detective Sergeant Cusmers proactively involved himself in the missing person investigation and search for Tony. Detective Sergeant Cusmers immediately began to identify other avenues of pinpointing Tony's location through cellphone data as well as data from different apps on Tony's cellphone. On his own accord, Detective Sergeant Cusmers saw historical cellphone data to track Tony's movements before she went missing. Once Detective Sergeant Cusmers received the data, mapped the data with law enforcement software that he is trained in. Detective Sergeant Cusmers proficiency in the field was demonstrated when he accurately mapped Tony's location, leading up to the point she went missing. Based on Detective Sergeant Cusmers' cellphone mapping, multiple witnesses were identified and located who had seen Tony on the night of April 17th, which is when she went missing. After identifying and interviewing the witnesses, it was learned that Tony had been searching for a lost dog, which cleared up false information pertaining to Tony's mental health status. Detective Sergeant Cusmers' accurate cellphone mapping also showed inconsistencies as to where Tony's vehicle had been located when compared to the phone data. This indicated that the mapping done by the Civil Air Patrol to which search efforts were being organized around was not consistent with the physical location of Tony's vehicle and to where she had likely gone the night of April 17. The information obtained by witnesses and the fact that there was an inconsistency in the cellphone data would not have been discovered if it were not for proactive, efficient and accurate skills displayed by Detective Sergeant Cusmers. Search efforts were redirected based on that newly discovered information. On the evening of April 19th, 2023, Lieutenant Joyner, armed with his new, with this new information, drove to the search area and set out on foot by himself in an attempt to locate Tony Reese. Soon after, Lieutenant Joyner located footprints that he believed were made by Tony Reese. Approximately 5:30 PM, after about 15 minutes of searching on foot, Lieutenant Joyner located Tony Reese alive at the bottom of a ravine. Lieutenant Joyner immediately notified the Lyon County Sheriff's Office Communications Division to respond to care flight helicopter to his location and began rendering aid to Reese. Within an hour of being located, Tony Reese was placed onto a care flight helicopter and transported to a local hospital for life-saving care. According to medical personnel on scene, had Lieutenant Joyner not taken the initiative and located Tony Reese, when he did, she would have not survived the ordeal. There's no doubt the actions of Sergeant Cusmers and Lieutenant Joyner directly led to the extension and preservation of Tony Reese's life. Both Sergeant Eric Cusmers and Lieutenant Tyrell Joyner's actions on April 19th, 2023 reflect their dedication to duty and are keeping with the highest standards of Lyon County Sheriff's Office and qualify them to be awarded the Lyon County Sheriff's Office Life Saving Award.
Any Commissioner comments? Comments?
Just want to thank, thank you gentlemen. That was awesome.
Okay. Thank you again for the presentations. Well deserved. All right, we're going to go back to our time certain at 9:00 AM for possible action to prove a resolution to transfer the unused private activity bond cap PABC to Nevada Rural Housing Authority NRHA in the amount of $2,000,582.49.
Good morning, Commissioner Chair, Commissioners. That was beautiful. Got to take a minute to compose myself after seeing those hearings. Thank you for putting that before me so I could see that. So anyway, my name is Diane Arvizo for the record. I am the Director of Home Ownership Programs for Nevada Rural Housing Authority. It's my privilege to be here with you today. I am here today to provide for you a little bit of flavor to go with the report that was provided in your packet. Tell you a little bit about why we ask for the transfer of your unused bond cap each year and what we do with that. So we have been delivering homeownership and housing opportunities across rural Nevada for 50 years. This year is our 50th birthday this year. We became a housing authority in 1973. In Lyon County, Nevada Rural Housing Authority has 131 residents receiving help with rent from Nevada Rural Housing Authority's Housing Choice Voucher Program. In our history, 729 units of housing have been built or preserved, contributing to the housing ecosystem with the help of Nevada Rural Housing Authority. In Lyon County, specifically here in Yarrington, we have the Southwood Apartments on South Street, which offer one, two and three bedrooms for qualifying households. We have rental assistance, of course, for those units. That was built in 1983 and Nevada Rural Housing renovated that property in 2017. We have the Yarrington Manor Apartments, which you're probably very familiar with on Mountain View Street. And that offers one bedrooms for seniors 62 and older and also for anyone with disabilities of any age. And that was renovated in 2004 by Nevada Rural Housing Authority. We serve about 300 clients annually, most of whom are seniors aging in place. And we, that's with like repairs to their home to help them age in place. And so there's a lot of things we do in, under the Nevada Rural Housing roof, aside from homeownership programs. Which of course homeownership is my favorite thing. So I'm going to say that, you know, partnerships and the relationships that we have with our counties and our cities is truly the cornerstone of what makes us successful in delivering the programs under Nevada Rural Housing Authority. Lyon County has certainly been a key contributor to the success of our homeownership programs and all of our housing programs. Since 2006, you've been transferring unused bond cap to support our homeownership programs to the tune of 21.4 million to date. Now, of course, that's not many, that's bond cap, but that's pretty awesome. And so what have we done with that? I'll tell you in just a moment. So first I want to tell you just as a reminder for anyone, and of course, those in attendance, bond cap or private activity bond cap, which we call bond cap, is a funding mechanism we use to help rural Nevadans benefit from the homebuyer tax credit program called the Mortgage Credit Certificate. Bond cap, of course, is not money. It's not a line item on the budget. And instead, it's the opportunity to issue debt for qualified purposes. Or it can be transferred to an entity like Nevada Rural Housing Authority, which we can then use to convert into tax credits to help people into homeownership. Every year, the Treasury issues the bond cap based on population to each state. And the state of Nevada holds 50% of that through the Department of Business and Industry. The other 50% is then allocated to the counties and cities, and that's the portion that you have, the 2 million plus. And you have until September 1st of each year to either use it for a qualified purpose. You'll have a request for that typically. Or if you don't have a request for that, it reverts back on September 1st to the Department of Business and Industry where they will then decide where it's going to go, typically to Washoe or Clark County for the bigger projects like multifamily, which is where the demand is. That's why Nevada Rural Housing since 2006 has been collecting the transfer of unused bond cap because we can pull all of that unused bond cap and create a single family program where we can issue either mortgage revenue bonds, which we used to do when it was more favorable to do so. Or we can convert them to mortgage tax credits, which help homebuyers into a home and make homeownership even more affordable. So we're requesting that Lyon County again this year, transfer your unused bond cap to Nevada Rural Housing, where you can continue to help the momentum of our single family programs. Since 2006, in Lyon County, we have helped 1,760 homebuyers with 360.4 million in affordable mortgages. We've provided your residents with 9.6 million in down payment assistance. Your homebuyers that receive the mortgage tax credit program have benefited from approximately 9.6 million in estimated federal tax savings. That's money returned to their pocket. Those are taxpayers who bought a home, got a tax credit through Nevada Rural Housing with your bond cap and got a portion of the mortgage interest that they paid on the home returned to them, less taxes that they had to pay to Uncle Sam. Very recently, Nevada Rural Housing helped 69 homebuyers in Lyon County. So like what did we do yesterday? 69 people were helped with 21.1 million in affordable mortgages. The Lyon County is certainly very active right now. 413,000 in down payment assistance was just provided to your homebuyers. And 19 of those homebuyers received the Mortgage Credit Certificate. So again, we can continue to help homebuyers across rural Nevada. That's also the benefit of transferring your unused bond cap to Nevada Rural Housing is it will be used exclusively in rural Nevada where we serve homebuyers. And so we appreciate your continued support and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about this year's request.
Commissioners? Okay, Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you very much, Ms. Arvizo, for the presentation. Good, always good to see you again. Whenever I read this, I try to think a little bit outside the box. Is there any way or is there a minimum maintenance agreement that people sign when they agree to, for the assistance through this program, that they are going to keep their property up to a minimum standard or is that not something that can be done?
That's an interesting question that you posed, Commissioner. You mean maintenance as in repairs?
Well, just, no, just keeping their, your, we have a lot of rundown places and we deal with kind of that rubbish problem. Is there something in there that we could add that makes it so that they have a minimum standard of maintenance as far as not ruining their neighbors' property value as well?
Well, here's what I can tell you. So, so we have, I'm going to just say two programs. So we have the Down Payment Assistance Program and it provides a 30-year first mortgage. And then coupled with that is the Down Payment Assistance, okay? Then we have the Mortgage Tax Credit Program and that tax credit can be attached to any 30-year first mortgage, okay, with or without down payment assistance. So those, both of those programs involve a 30-year first mortgage. When a participant is obtaining a 30-year first mortgage, they are going to be signing mortgage documents where they are committing to the lender who is, you know, providing the mortgage funds, that they will maintain the property in as good or better condition over the life of the loan to guarantee the security of the loan. That is the extent of what they are committed to. It would be up to the lender to pursue whether there was any default and performance under those commitments.
Thank you.
Great question.
Commissioner Keller, have anything? Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just a comment. I've been involved with Nevada Rural Housing Area for quite a while now. And you, you guys do awesome work. Certainly appreciate it and hope you continue to do that, especially helping that people out here in Lyon County.
Commissioner Keller, we have you unmuted. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't have any questions on that.
Okay. Thank you. Any public comment? No? Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. We need a motion on the possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a resolution to transfer the unused private activity bond cap PABC to Nevada Rural Housing Authority NRHA in the amount of
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, a second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. All right.
Anybody opposed? I have a five zero vote. Motion passes. Thank you for your presentation and money's on the way.
And tell Mr. Brewer that he's allowed to come to these too.
But then I wouldn't be able to.
Well, no, he would need a babysitter.
I'll pass on the message and I will, yeah, definitely.
All right, we are past 9:15 time certain. So for presentation only, a presentation and programs update from Hiren. Both are. I guess I have this are scribbled all over that word. The Extension Educator for University of Nevada Reno, Lyon County Extension Office of Yarrington.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Hiren Babser. I'm the Lyon County Extension Educator for University of Nevada Reno. And today we're going to Uh, and today we're gonna, uh. Try to highlight some of the programs, the things we've done over the last few months. Uh, and also to. I'll, I'll stick around afterwards for anybody that wants to connect and travel. Have ideas or questions or anything like that. I'm here in Babser, I'm the, I basically the manager of the office here in Lion County, Yarrington, we're on five or four minute street. Hillary Dash. She's our four-H person, she runs our four-H program, she's here. Judy Halterman, she runs our SNAP ad program in schools, she's on Zoom, and also our admin assistant, Judy Schlegel, she's also on Zoom. Uh, with us today. So, uh, I get asked this question a lot, what is extension, or what is it that we do? Some people know, I'm sure commissioners and some others know this. Uh, because of the history, but then anybody who doesn't know. Uh, extension is basically, it's branching out of universities, uh, so all in throughout this. Country in the, in the United States, a hundred and twelve land ground institutions. Uh, have a third mission from, to doing the. Uh, traditional teaching and research, they, it's called extension means extending the research and other activities and resources. And go to the public at the community level like in counties, uh, that's how we operate and we provide educational programs. Primarily to help. Community needs as, uh, as in different areas, and these areas include agriculture. Health, human, uh, community development, and any youth programs which we, which we run through our four-H program, any family development programs. Anything basically that the society needs. We can potentially try and address it, uh, with some resource if possible. It is a partnership, uh, there is federal money that comes for the land grant and for state money in, of course. County partnerships, uh, and it's a partnership, uh, of all, of all, uh, three entities that covers, uh. That allows us to do what we do. And of course, programs are flexible, we change year to year. As I said, based on the needs every year, we'll come up with different programs as we can. Uh, some of the programs that we do right now in Lion County are four-H, uh, program is one of the most popular ones, and also our SNAP ad programs. I'll talk a little bit in more details in a little bit. Uh, rate on awareness program, uh, that we have statewide program, and we are very proud, uh, of that, we've had. Trying, uh. Uh, educate people on rate on medication in, in Lion County, Lion County is. A little bit high on rate on gas, so. And we try to do other programs and community development, including Nevada Economic Assessment Program, that's a statewide program where we participate. And, uh, in the school district, we do this program, Polycon Summit, which Commissioner Jacobson attended last month with us, and, uh. Our goal is to extend that and expand that further in the, in other counties, maybe in neighboring counties, and hopefully. Hopefully, uh, we come up with a statewide program on that, uh, I'll go, I'll let a four-H person, Hillary, talk about the four-H. Program next, and then I'll, and manage of, and other programs.
As Haren said, my name is Hillary Dashell, um, I am the program coordinator for four-H in Lion County. Um, we are, I and my volunteers, it's a volunteer-based program. Uh, work, have been working very hard on establishing, um, and expanding clubs and projects for all the areas in our. Um, county, and we've been fairly successful. Uh, we've increased our volunteer participation, which, um, though it hasn't been apparent this year with respect to our enrollment. We expect that, um, in the coming year with more volunteers on board, we'll be able to reach more children in our county and provide them. With some quality programming from four-H. Um, so in doing, in those efforts, we've offered new workshops and clinics throughout the county. Um, in an effort to attract more youth into our program. And to also provide education for them, our program is education-based, we, uh, the programs that we run meet standards for. Um, the schools, so it's an important portion of outside education, um, that. Kind of dovetails with what we do, uh, in our school. Um, we also have, um, worked hard and earned a couple of grants, um, we got an NRA grant worth fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars. This will allow us to, uh, expand our shooting sports, this includes, uh, shotguns. Archery, um, rifle. And we may be able to go into some other programs based on this additional front funding. Um, we've also, uh, in the final stages of getting a grant for ninety-five thousand dollars for Nevada Next Gen. The micro grant that's offered through the university. Um, this will allow us to provide additional support for our youth in mental health, uh, leadership, entrepreneurship, and community development. So we're excited about the opportunities that we might be able to give to our youth. Um, some other options, uh, some other things that we offer through four-H, we offer summer camp for kids up at Tahoe, four-H has. A spectacular property up there, um, it's a beachfront property, uh, we can serve kids throughout the county. We'll be offering that camp in July. Um, we've expanded our numbers for that camp, so I'm excited, we'll have some additional youth up there. Attending, they'll have an opportunity to do some archery, lots of swimming, um, some education and some, um, outdoor. Um, activities, it's a great, uh, it's a great event, and we also provide scholarships for those children that need a, need them. And for those, um, that need the assistance to go up there, so, uh, that will be taking place over the summer. We're also hoping to be able to start some of the programming that comes with the Nevada Next Gen Micro Grant, so we're excited about that.
Thank you, Hillary. So, your next program, uh, that is very popular in our schools and kids and. Many of your kids ever come and ask about new fruit or vegetable. That's because of this program that our, uh, our own Judy Halterman, she's retiring now, so I don't know what we're going to do about that. Uh, but I'm going to fight to keep the program in, uh, and do something about it for sure, but we might have to hire someone new, and we'll see how that goes, but. The program, basically, there's two components to it, one is called Produce Pick of the Month. This is when the Judy goes to classrooms and, uh, tell, teaches them about all the benefits and nutritional values of fruits and vegetables. She introduces a new fruit or a vegetable every month. So throughout the whole school year, their kids are introduced to about eight or nine different, uh, vegetables or fruits, and then she talks about the benefits. And, and so on, and they even get to taste them, so they get to realize that some of them like or don't like it, it's up to. Uh, this program runs mostly in second and third grade. Uh, and in elementary schools, we've been in four elementary schools in Dayton, Burnley, Silver Stage, and Yarrington. And, uh, the, I think there's about six hundred and eighty-five students in, in all, all second and third grade students have participated in this program and benefited from it. The other part of that, uh, program is called Smarter Lunchroom Movement, this is, uh, we, we use some of the guidance from U S Department of Agriculture. And, uh, how to make lunchrooms better. In terms of what is available, what is accessible, uh, options that students get in terms of fruits, vegetables, milk options, and that kind of stuff. And even the arrangement and time they get to eat and all of that. And so I've, I actively participated in that, so basically based on a U S D guidance, we, we kind of create, uh, what we call, uh. Uh, it's a, it's a questionnaire, and we basically mark what is available, what's not, and out of sixty. Different points, uh, they get a score. And what we've found is every school we did this, and when then we do a follow-up, they have improved, uh, their lunchrooms. In different aspects, whether that's offering more options with vegetables or fruits, or. Whether that's, uh, more white milk than chocolate milk and that kind of stuff. Uh, it's been, and it, what it has allowed is, uh, basically, small changes can make a big difference and also creates, uh, less waste of food. In the lunch rooms, and this program affects all of elementary kids, or most of it at least. And, uh, uh, we did the math, it was about twelve hundred and seventy-three students that were benefi- that benefited from that program. The next program, uh, that I was mentioning, radon awareness, uh, we have tried actively, it's a statewide program. And Lion County's part of it. Uh, we, uh, radon is a gas, for those who don't know, this is a naturally occurring radioactive gas. It just occurs from the, from the soil, it just comes out from the soil, so it's important, we test it every, as, as much as we can. Uh, as you can see on the map there, it's actually in this area. Particularly in the county. Uh, based on the recent numbers and tests that were conducted, there were pretty high, uh, high amount of radon gas. So some of them mitigation, uh, uh, is required. If you test and it comes out high, you know, and test again and again, and ultimately, if it doesn't go down over time, then you have to maybe do some things to mitigate. Some of the simple things in summer you can do is keep windows open or something that helps. But there could be other things, uh. Builders and other people that do radon tests these days ahead of time, when they start to build things in different places now. Uh, our beginning of the year, January, uh, we have this Na- National Radon Action Month. And that's when we hand out, we give out free test kits, we still have some of those leftovers if anybody want. We'd be happy to give it to you. They can be bought also, if we run out of the free ones, uh, it's only about eleven dollars, uh, from, and, and, uh. You can just stop by our office or ask, or you go on the website, you can find how to buy them as well. Uh, we gave out mo- more kits probably than any other year in the past because of our, of our, uh, campaign, our advertising. And I've, I've given, we've given out some, to people who came to repeat testing after they were high in the first time, and. Uh, the biggest thing about, please don't ignore radon because it can actually cause lung cancer, so please. If you think you're, uh, if you don't know, you can just do it, uh, short-term test, it only, it doesn't require a lot of work. Uh, I would highly encourage people to do it, uh, as much, uh, e- every year, it's recommended, even if it's low in your place. You might want to do it every year just to check. Uh, some of the other efforts that are ongoing, uh, uh. We have put up a needs assessment, I wouldn't call it a needs assessment, a questionnaire on, about what different programs you, you would like to see us do. We've distributed a mo- uh, that, those surveys in libraries and other places and schools and everywhere. And, uh, similar requests that it seems at this point are some, some. Kind of education programs in business or ag business and entrepreneurship, and of course our four-H and youth programs. Uh, of different kind of clubs. Uh, so we're working on that in the future, uh, the Nevada Economic Assessment Project, uh, uh, does work, uh, throughout the state. Now, help out, being an economist myself, I help out with that in Lion County. Uh, where they do assessment of resources available for economic development. They did get, uh, the neat project statewide, did get a housing, a project, uh, project from State Housing Authority. And I was just listening to, uh. And I was like, I should connect with her, and, and some of the things they do, maybe you might be able to, when they come to line, I will be helping out with that, uh, at least in. That regards, now a couple of other statewide programs that I work on as a faculty, you and our, uh, farming and food supply chain issues. Working with Farm Bureau and collaboration, I'm on two statewide grants on that. One is on sustainable agriculture, we're trying to promote sustainable agriculture as much as possible throughout the state and country, of course, but. And this will definitely help people in, uh, uh, Lion County as well. Uh, the other grant is, uh, a, a larger grant, this is a five million grant for, that you and I received. Uh, uh, this is U S Department of Agriculture's Ag Marketing Service Grant that's looking to enhance the food supply chain issues. Or help with that and create some food hubs regionally. So for this region, western region, uh, California is the lead, U, University of California is the lead, and we're part of the group of, uh, states. And we receive a Nevada portion, it's five million dollars on that, so we're, we're pretty excited about that. Uh, I also want to highlight some of this, you and our programs that are statewide, which, uh, can, a lot of them are online. But if you have any questions or connect with them, I can help with that, our Master Gardeners program is available. I know there are some requests about gardening and things like that, so that is available, our Master Gardeners program, I can help you connect with them. Integrated pet, pest management programs advertised heavily. Uh, through the state, and we can definitely help you connect with them as well as the Healthy Living and Healthy Aging Program. And we do, uh, every monthly flyers and newsletters and videos, there are also flyers and newsletter. We do give, give them out to our senior centers here, all throughout the county. Uh, just, I want to thank some of our collaboration partners, I don't think I'm, I've got all the list, the full list here, but. All I, I definitely want to thank our club leaders and volunteers and four-H. And Lion County School District, I mentioned the Econ Summit Program, which. Uh, of course, wouldn't have happened, but also the schools, uh, in general, all the teachers and people. Who help with our SNAP ad and other programs, uh, I have, I'm collaborating, uh, on things like, uh, with Farm Bureau. And libraries and Healthful Living Coalition in Dayton. And, uh, we're working with farmers markets, uh, the Department of Education, and of course, uh, in all the research that. University of Nevada Reno faculty do, so I wanted to thank everybody for that, uh, right now. And like I said, I will stick around for a while, so would anybody want to talk to me in person, I will. I, I hope I have my visiting cards, but if not, by the way, don't call our office right now because our phones are down. We have our phones and fax line mixed up, so I don't know how that happened, but anyways, but please reach out to me via email if you want, or, or Hillary, or anybody. And, uh, a- any, any ideas, suggestions, any programs you think we can do, uh, through education intervention? We will be happy to, uh, come up with something and, uh, we'll be happy to work with you, thank you.
Commissioners.
I don't have any questions, but I would like to say thank you.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, yes, thank you for the presentation. Uh, you guys do a lot of good things to help a lot of different people out, and I'm going to be checking out your online Master Gardening Program.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Hockaday, uh, just a couple things, uh, and I have a question too for Hillary, so, um, but. Uh, didn't we have two elementary schools in the Dayton area get recognized for their school gardens?
Uh, yes, it, it, yes, uh, and some of that, um, that four-H has in the past done school gardening. Um, but right now, I think they have someone that's in the school that's working.
So is that part of the SNAP program, or is those programs separate? Okay, so we don't, maybe we could get together and share some resources and. I mean, grow it even further, especially with that Master Gardening Program, I see, that'd be, uh, wonderful. Um, and then, uh, Hillary, the question, uh, regarding the camp. You were talking about, how does word get out on that? Do you share information with Boys and Girls Clubs? Because it's kind of during the summer, is that?
We do, um, in the past, they've needed to be four-H members to participate, but it's opened up recently, so that that's not a requirement anymore. Um, we share out with the, uh, word of mouth through kids, it's very successful, um, actually somewhat more successful than sharing it. But the Boys and Girls Clubs are made aware of those efforts.
And then although, if four-H clubs, of course, have that information, yes.
They, 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 they're our first go-to when it comes to opening some of these opportunities.
Right on, thank you both, very enjoyable, good to see you again, Haren.
Commissioner Keller, I see you're unmuted, do you have any comment or questions?
I don't have any, uh, comments, I just want to thank them for the proposal, and, and I, I really, uh, support the programs that they're doing, so thank you for coming in.
Uh, I just want to say thank you, especially Lion County, uh, Board Commissioners, because. Based on what I'm hearing through UNR and some of the other counties, the support from Lion County Committee, which, Board Commissioners and. Uh, is pretty, pretty well for extension compared to what I've heard from some of the other counties, I really thank you.
And I thank you for, uh, conducting all the programs for the community in Lion County, uh, and thank you for the presentation today. Okay, um. It's like we're at, uh, time certain for nine-thirty for Possible Action Acceptance of Renewal Proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool, Pool. And Approval for Payment from Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-three Through Twenty Twenty-four Funds. And you're back.
I'm back, good morning, Kayla Woods, for the record, with A and H Insurance. Good to see you all again, I'm definitely honored and excited to still be standing here and going through this renewal with you. So, thank you again for that opportunity, um. We are coming up on the renewal, so all of the public entities in the state renew their insurance seven-one. You are with the pool program, which was started in nineteen eighty-seven to serve public entities. And, one thing that I want to point out first is that this program is not just an insurance program. It's not just providing the insurance coverages. But it truly is a risk management program, which for me is so important because if something goes bad, something bad happens. You have insurance there to cover it, right? But if we can stop the bad thing from happening. But if we can stop the bad thing from happening in the first place by paying some extra due diligence to our practices and our safety procedures. And that to me is the optimal way to move forward. So I'm going to keep this pretty brief today. We do have Alan here from the pool as well. So I'm just going to go over a little bit about how we got here, because as I stated two weeks ago, um. Insurance is a very small part of your world. It's a big part of our world and we're working on this, you know, every day and every week in the background. And so I just wanted to give kind of that timeline of how we got to this proposal here today. So, and. In November of each year, the pool sends out the renewal application, which goes to Josh and his team. They do a great job of leading this. Um, and this is what talks about the exposures, what the insurance is going to be based off of um for the upcoming policy term. Once that application comes back to us, we've been keeping track of all the changes and the exposures over the prior year. So we double check it just to make sure everything is accurate and as it should be. And there's some dialogue that goes back and forth between Josh and his team. Um, regarding any changes, especially changes over ten percent. Every three years, the pool also does an appraisal of all the properties um within the county. You guys did have an appraisal this year, so an appraiser came out and looked at all the properties, looked at their conditions. And estimated the replacement cost for the buildings. I'm happy to share this with you. Um, if you'd like, it's a large document. From there, we review this for accuracy, as does Josh. Now, the property coverage with the pool is not like normal insurance coverage. On your homeowner's insurance, you may have heard of something called guaranteed replacement cost. It doesn't exist that much anymore, but it used to exist. And what that said is that. If a company ensures your home, regardless of how much it costs to actually rebuild your home, they're going to pay for it. So even if a loss happens and it comes into costing more, they're not going to say, well, this is all the coverage you have, you know. Do what you can with it. They're going to actually pay to rebuild your home, even if it costs more. The pool's property coverage is similar to that, and these appraisals is how they guarantee that they're able to do that. So this comes at no cost to you guys. Um, so after the applications come back to us in January, the pool goes out to market to begin um negotiating our reinsurance with the Lloyds Markets. And then we have the annual board meeting for the pool in April, and now we get to the proposals. So I just like to give that background because there's a lot of things there that, you know, you're like, okay, like we got to write a big check, you know? So I like to tell where that comes from. Um, the other thing I prepared today, which I'm going to go over very quickly. Um, a lot of our members have been asking like, what does the pool actually do for us? Can you break this down in non-insurance terms so we can understand what we're actually getting here and what we're paying for? And so I'm just going to go over very high level five coverage parts. Each of these coverage parts has extensions, meaning they're giving you more coverage and some exclusions, meaning they're taking away coverage. Um. So the first coverage that we kind of just talked on is the property coverage. That's. Your property, your buildings, your stuff inside, equipment, vehicles, et cetera. That's what we call a first party coverage. So if something happens to those items, they're going to make you guys whole. They're going to make the county whole. Okay? Liability coverage is another main coverage. Liability coverage is a third party coverage. So that's going to make the other person whole. And primarily, this pertains to bodily injury. Or property damage that the county is found liable for. Um, and one important part to point out here is that it also covers defense, right? Because sometimes people accuse you of stuff that they think you did wrong or that they think caused harm to them. That didn't actually cause harm. So defense is a big part of those coverages. Um, and then there's two coverages which are typically excluded from liability, but there's still liability coverages. So they're still going to come in and cover a third party for bodily injury or property damage. We have to get a separate liability policy for them. And that's pollution coverage, which in insurance world, pollution is anything that's not supposed to be where it's supposed to be. So my favorite example to give is like strawberries on a road, you know? A truck with a ton of strawberries is driving down the road. Somehow it crashes, the strawberries fall on the road. Well, a lot of people would think, okay, that's liability. No, that's pollution because the strawberries are not meant to be on the road, even if they're not hazardous. The fourth is um cyber coverage, which again bodily injury and property damage, but as a result of a cyber incident. So someone takes your system hostage, or maybe you leak personal identifiable information of. People within your community or information that you've had. Um, and the last coverage we're not talking about today is the workers' compensation. That's the catch. Um, and that's obviously employees that are hurt from the job. Um, now, one thing, last thing. Brad always says, keep it brief, Kayla, and I could talk forever, but um. You know, one thing that a lot of our members ask about, I think, is um alternatives to the pool, you know? And that's not to say that we don't believe in the pool or that we don't think it's incredible, but we still have to do our due diligence to see what else is out there. And that's something that we want to assure you that we are doing every year in the fall. I have this massive spreadsheet of all the other potential programs that could possibly serve the public entities in our state. And what I'm looking for in those programs is I'm looking for the risk management services they offer. The human resources services they offer, how they package together coverages. Their ability to provide coverages on your exposures. Um, and then, of course, the pricing. And again, this year, nothing can compete with what the pool is offering. It truly is a phenomenal program and there's, there's nothing out there right now that compares to it, but. I will continue to do my due diligence because that's my job. We we shop the insurance for you. Um, so with that, I'll hand it off to Alan.
Uh, thank you very much, Caleb. Uh, for the record, Alan Calt, I'm the chief financial officer for Cool Pack. You guys own us. You're the board of directors. Good. Um, and and that's so important, you know, we we look at pool and the members of the center of everything that we do within our organization. We are owned, we are a member services consortium, a nonprofit of Nevada local governments, of cities, counties, school districts, general improvement districts. We are a member, own member governed. Mister Chairman is sitting back here, Josh Foley, the chairman of the pool. We appreciate his leadership. We appreciate his commitment to the pool and the leadership, you know, of our organization, leading the schools, the cities, the counties. That belong uh in the pool. We provide greater levels of coverage because holding hands, coming together as a group, we're able to get Costco discounts, if you will, bulk purchasing. We're able to provide a hundred and fifty million flood and earthquake coverage that, you know, small entities could not get those coverages. Okay, when you guys have, you know, uh, property values that exceed, um, uh, let me get that number real quick. It's a hundred and seventy million. But when you have that level of property coverage, okay, you need to have it done. We come up with innovative things, members helping members. And what you guys have done, your flood mitigation preventative measures to save your community, to save your residents, to save your businesses. Also help save the downtown and public buildings. That's innovative thinkers. That's what owners do. That's what the pool pack does. We're not about insurance. I appreciate Caleb's insurance diagram, but the fact that you guys buy into a program. And we spend seventy-six percent of our dollars paying for the insurance, the loss fund. The next largest piece of our budget is for member services. Okay, you know, over two million dollars, we've invested in programs that Josh and the other members of the committee say, these are programs that will benefit. Us, helping us serve our community better. The next largest expense is our member, ours, agent commissions. And our our operating costs are four point seven percent of our total pie. So we're very efficient. Uh, you can see the organization, who the who's who, and again, Josh Foley is the chairman of the pool. He's our fiscal officer and the workers' comp program. You can see we have representation from school districts, from hospitals uh involved in our program. And we greatly appreciate their expertise and their leadership. Uh, and you may recognize me, I used to be the church county comptroller for many years. And believed in the pool back, back then, and strongly believe in the financial power that coming together as a team that the pool offers its membership. This year was a tough market. Capacity was an issue. Price increases happened, but we uh, we beat the market on price. We beat the market such that other entities do go out to bid. And I'm proud to say that our friends at the city of Sparks are joining the pool. Why are they joining the pool? We're financially significantly less than what their incumbent carrier was. Okay, so you, you know, we thought at one point perhaps big entities like that might be too big for us. But they have expertise that they can share, and they're coming in on the market, on the property program. And they'll be able to share their expertise with members helping members as part of our creed. The other thing that we do, as Kayla highlighted, is member services, okay? Risk management services. We have the sheriff here and his folks and and then the cop world, and we got your back. We got your six. We got your six, six layers of services that that over time we've developed, human resources, e-learning, cybersecurity, risk management, health and wellness, law enforcement. On our workers' comp program, we have a cardiac wellness program with advanced medical testing. Because we know our first responders, we've got to treat them like professional athletes. Life-saving heroes like they are, so that when they're out there saving that life, hiking and doing those things, okay, they are physically fit, able and to do that. We have a program we call it fit for retirement, because what we want them to do, we understand what they go through in their work. We want them to have a good, long retirement. We've got to keep them healthy and that advanced blood work, working and providing that that information to them. A dietitian, an exercise physiologist, these are innovative programs that pool has worked on with the members to develop to help. Our, your employees, I call my employees because we're all in this together, okay? Be better serving their community, you know, serving their families and and that type of thing. Well, and have a happy, healthy retirement on the law enforcement side. So real quick, let me highlight a couple areas, cybersecurity, okay? Um, cyber, this with AI, the invention of AI and the things going on, we're seeing more and more hacks. Okay, we work with a national expert, Tony Rucci. We've done a passive network assessment of your, your IT system. We've developed recommendations. You guys have implemented those. Okay, that's very important. We, we've developed critical incidents response plans so that if there was a hack. Your people are trained and they know what to do in order to do that. Okay, we provide no before fishing campaigns, those type of services. We have quarterly cyber training. There was just a call uh last week or earlier this week. Uh, on cyber with your IT people are able to work together. So that group of like-minded people who talk their language. Secure and have resources to do their job better, to protect the networks here in Lion County. We've uh embraced a program called e-learning uh through Absorb. There's over three hundred and fifty classes. You guys actively participate. You've had over two thousand course completions by your employees within Lion County. We appreciate that involvement. Okay? A lot of those courses, twenty minutes, ten minutes, okay, um, that provide training necessary quick and they can do it anytime. They have a specific login. You know, fifteen minutes left at the end of the day, you know, they can go log in, take the class. So like for your road crew, we have a different matrix of of recommended classes that are best for them, you know? And obviously, uh, you know, versus office work, there's uh different types of classes. We have a HR company, PRI, Public Resources, or otherwise known as Pool Pack HR. You have a business partner assigned to Lion County. All those business partners collaborate, they work with your staff. Okay, uh, to and to address those very difficult HR issues. We have sample policies, forms, HR briefings, alerts. They'll be coming out with a legislative update on those items specifically related to HR things that the legislature was involved in. They assist your HR team and your folks from hiring to firing and, you know, how to retain and and maximize the best talent that you folks have, you know, within your organization. We have the enterprise risk management program that helps evaluate the safety and the whole program of the entire uh Lion County and within our other members. Okay, and it's a way of us being able to recognize the members who achieve excellence in this program. At the end of it, with the successful completion of that program, there's a monetary award that those dollars can be used and invested in safety within your organization. We feel at Pool Pack and through our leadership team and our members, such as Josh, you know, as the chairman, that we're here to help each other. Members helping members, we're in this together. You are owners. We're nonprofit, okay? We don't, you know, there's, we're not paying stockholders dividends, okay? You know, on the open market, when you have, you know, another carrier, the money gets reinvested in the great state of Nevada. And ideas, ideas that Josh developed and your people here in Lion County develop that are excellent, that are able to share with Churchill and our other members. So for that, we appreciate your involvement. Uh, we're all passionate about what we do because we're serving the great citizens. And it is amazing, you know, uh, I too was moved by your, you know, a couple of things on that, that presentation. Somebody willing to have a career, thirty-four years supporting law enforcement, serving this community is so beautiful. And the law enforcement going above and beyond, using technical skills, okay? You know, uh, to save somebody's life. Wow, that's incredible, you know? And a drone program, you know, that we've uh, we've pushed out a drone program and helping law enforcement as part of the tools and the toolkits, you know, as things. Because that was used by another entity to help save. So it's members helping members come up and innovate, innovative ideas. We have grant resources available to uh advocate those, and we appreciate all you do. Especially your participation and ownership in this program. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And again, thank you, your staff, um, and thank you for your preventative measures, you know, to save life, property and damage, you know, for your residents here in the community with your flood mitigation. Very much appreciate that.
Commissioner Jacobson.
And well, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Um. His Lion County, excuse my ignorance on this, have they, have we participated in the ERM program or is that?
I I believe that you guys are in the process of getting, you know, it's a comprehensive program that looks at all the different uh areas.
I just hadn't heard of it, so I wasn't sure, so.
It it takes about a year to complete.
Right, and then, um, sorry to interrupt, um. I underst- I, looking at this, it's always difficult to swallow the nineteen percent inc- uh increase, um, but it's my understanding that that's. Just the way it is right now. Everybody's up a a a bunch. What caused it? What was the main cause of that? Nineteen, almost nineteen percent increase.
I I mean, I can answer it. Well, Kayle, go first.
I'll I'll give it a shot and then you correct me. Um, yeah, so about thirteen to fourteen percent of that increase was due to capacity issues. With our reinsurance carriers. So that's a whole lot of insurance language, but what that means is when the pool. Goes out to the Lloyds of London markets to shop the insurance, we're in a hard insurance marketplace right now. So across the board, even out of public entities, we're seeing large increases. And we're seeing more and more businesses having to go to these surplus excess lines, non-admitted carriers. And when all that business is flooded to these surplus excess lines, non-admitted carriers, they have to collect more premium to still be financially sound. Um, and so you guys had, it was about an eighteen point eight six percent increase. We did see about a five million dollar increase in total insured values, which is your property. So I would, so you had about a five percent increase over exposures and yeah, about a thirteen to fourteen percent increase due to market conditions.
The only thing I would add, there's two other elements that came into play, uh, the cost of cyber coverage. Okay, because the amount of uh cyber attacks is going up and the impact in the coverage on that. So that was an additional area that had greater than average level of increase. And then on the liability side, what we're seeing is on on law enforcement, not necessarily, not necessarily the great state of Nevada. But law enforcement and the nuclear uh verdicts that have been uh, that have been won in other jurisdictions on policing. So the liability, they're they're looking at liability in the law enforcement side. So what have we done to combat that? We have had a relationship with a national uh uh firm. Going back, I think, twenty plus years to provide model training. We have monthly roll call, um, e-learning seminars, uh. Webinars, if you will, uh, on roll call on different topics to address law enforcement. We had provide model policy and we provide uh attorneys to uh evaluate and look at cases to keep our law enforcement folks, um. Uh, very well trained and uh up with the latest laws, okay? The other thing that we recently did to all our members, because we were having some issues when in in custody death cases. We went around and we did a uh facility assessment of all of all the jails within our membership, okay? And we saw a lot of great things that uh, that the jails were doing and a couple of areas, you know, different jails that need a little bit of help. And they were able to fix those uh, those things. So and throughout that process, it was determined, you know what, we ought to have. We ought to have a regional jail, Nevada's uh, a jail group where the jails get to, the jail supervisor folks get together. So Marshall and Company developed a group called Endog. And um, I feel bad, Sheriff, if you, if you have your end dog point, I'm going to owe you lunch. Um, but they have these points that they all uh were given, like challenge points, like a military deal. And this is the Nevada detention administrators working group is what that means. But what I really, in layman's terms, it's like-minded people who are passionate about their job, in this case, J. But what I really in layman's terms, it's like-minded people who are passionate about their job. In this case, J were effectively running jails. Getting together, figuring out, hey, what are you doing best? You're doing it really good. Hey, maybe I had to do that at my entity. Sharing those great ideas and then working together uh, to mitigate against some of the issues that we would see. Um, in around the nation, making sure that those things didn't happen within ours. But we did get penalized, you know, everyone's getting with our penalty on law enforcement was not as significant as some of our peer. Uh, entities pools throughout the state, you know, like in Minnesota, some of those other jurisdictions. Their their uh, jail liability was significant, law enforcement liability increased significantly. So by pooling together, um, you know, our our property. Increase, albeit significant. The fact that we've been in the marketplace with the same syndicate for over twenty plus years, we've been able to smooth out that level of increase. When Sparks came on board, we were sixteen percent lower. Than their existing price and their carrier had a thirty-eight percentage. So they saved significantly. Jumping on board with this program and uh, you know, from a price standpoint, the, you know. I think that's a good testimonial that we, you know, we're we're doing the best we can and it's a hard work. Without you guys building that we're or the, you know, um, the berm or whatever, rent flooding. You know, we could have had a three, four, ten million dollar, you know, uh, property damage.
Right, and that was. Perfect lead into my next question. So with our twenty-five thousand deductible, we have a. Line item coming up for about three hundred thousand. So that means you're gonna cover two hundred and seventy-five thousand of that. Once we pay our deductible.
So, so what? Don't hurt to ask. Mister Commissioner, here we go. Here we go, um. No, not at all, sir.
It seems like that three hundred thousand saved a lot of insurance money.
Here we go. I was Churchill County Comptroller and we did the big dig and the community got together. They held their hand. They worked twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week to build that. That uh, the big dig, the trench to not flood fountain. We were able to convince working with congressional delegation. Um, and we got reimbursed and refunded from from the FEMA. And the state of Nevada helped with that project to save fountain. This year they've invested over three million dollars. They may or may not get it back in the same way. You may or may not get reimbursed back for your mitigation efforts. My personal belief, sir, and I I was in the trenches, just like Josh is on the finance side. Okay, and the only time Churchill used their mitigation, their rainy rainy day fund was for that natural disaster, reimbursing our road partner for some of the wages. But you know what? Money spent on preventative measures to save lives and to save property. We gotta get the federal government to understand that's better than having it damaged. It costs tens of millions of dollars of damage and you have to rebuild. Look at what you guys said. You guys are heroes. But you're you're hardworking people that built that, you know. You made an investment. We will work with you to see what we can do, you know, as a pool. To uh, con- convince the federal government to pay their share. Okay, and uh, we were successful in Churchill County. In two thousand seventeen, I believe Churchill will be successful. I believe, you know, that you guys will be successful in getting funding from FEMA. Um, and from the state of Nevada, uh, emergency declarations were done. You've done all the right steps. And um, you know, at the end of the day. At the end of today, there may be things that aren't paid. And I've mentioned to Josh, you know, hey, maybe you submit for a grant. For partial reimbursement. And the sad news is that it may only be twenty-five thousand that we're able to give back. On something like that, not the two hundred and seventy-five thousand or whatever, but that this proactive leadership that you did. Saved me and saved downtown. So people's houses, businesses did get ruined. Is what being passionate, that's why you're leaving, that's why you got elected. You guys stepped up, did the right thing. We need the federal government to step up, do the right thing and reimburse it.
Right, I saw staff did. Amazing. So I think you just gave me the rope of dope on the two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Alright.
I love you, man, but I don't have.
Alright. I was born at night, it wasn't last night. So thank you guys very much. That's all I have, Chairman Hockday.
Sure, Hendricks.
Henderson.
Thanks, Mister Chair. Just thank you guys for your presentation. You guys do. Do a lot of work. I know Pool Pack's been around for quite a while and a good group of people.
Commissioner Keller, any comments? No, I see you're still muted. Can you comment?
Uh, no, thank, thank you for the presentation. Uh, no comments.
Thank. Uh, thank you for your presentation. Appreciate the information. Uh, it is ten thirty-four. We're gonna take a five minute break.
Well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's an action item, not not just presentation.
And public comment.
Sorry, uh, public comment.
Mr. Russ Wright, still live in Dayton. Um, I just had to comment, i- if this gentleman was selling it, I would buy it. I I'm impressed, sir. I am truly impressed. But to give you a a perspective on the fifteen or nineteen percent. Increase that they're talking about, I'm aware of an area. In that foreign nation on the other side of the Sierras. Where homeowners are facing a hundred and fifteen percent increase in their homeowners' policy. So nineteen percent's a bargain.
Still doesn't feel good, though.
Alright, Commissioner comments, public comments. Do I have a motion on this possible action, Dan?
Mister Chair, I move that we accept renewal proposal from the Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool. And approval for payment for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four funds.
Second.
You have a second, okay, motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those in pose, okay, passes five zero. I'm gonna take a break. Now we're gonna take a five minute break for everybody to get a rest break here. Ten thirty-six, take a break. Your corrections are going here, so. Alright, it's ten forty-eight, gonna reconvene. Uh, we are going to move to thirteen A. For presentation and update only. Presentation update from Chris Thompson, project manager with the TRI organization and the TRI two project. To give an overview of the Fernley Economic Development Act, including its status in Congress and an update. And the TRI two project, including the impact of the Fernley Economic Development Act.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, Commissioners, Mister County Manager. My name's Chris Thompson. I'm the project manager for Tahoe Reno Industrial Center and our newest project, which is in line county TRI two. I'll be joined today uh, on Zoom uh, to for part of this. By Stephanie Walker of the Porter Group, lobbyist firm in Washington DC that we hired. A few years ago to help us get this lands bill passed. Just a little bit of background before I get started. First off, this is my third appearance in front of the uh, county commission. My first one was two years ago, uh, announcing that publicly announcing the start of our efforts. To get TRI two up and running. About a year ago, I came back in order to get a approval of for the county commission. And signing of a letter of support for our Fernley lands bill, which is what was required by the United States Senate at that time. And the commission and the and the then uh, county manager was kind enough to support that. I think the vote was five to nothing. Uh, and when I'm back today, we're at a very critical point in time. Uh, these bills that you're gonna hear about from Miss Walker are are in good shape. Uh, we we still have some work to do in the Senate that we'll talk about. Um, and I'm here today, uh, in particular, on behalf of our investor, hundred percent investor and decision maker, Don Roger Norman. And I'm here today, in particular, on behalf of our investor, hundred percent investor and decision maker, Don Roger Norman and Lance Gilman, who is our and the brokerage and Donnie Gilman, who's with us here today, who has taken over the day to day running of our marketing and sales operation for TRI and TRI two. So let's get started. Here's a cover of four points. First and off, just kind of overview of the TRI two project where we're at terms of the project status of the Fernley bill in the House, which was previously introduced, that Miss Walker will cover what the Senate is requiring, which is why I'm back here today. There's a new requirement that just came from the senators a couple of months ago. And then and then number four, the importance of speed in moving the Fernley bill forward. Mr. Chair, is it okay if I go to the screen or do I have to stay here for the mic?
You'll have to stay there for the mic, sorry.
Okay, so you'll see on the screen TRI, the original land mass was a hundred and seven thousand acres. That's the land mass there in yellow. We have sold completely that park out. Donnie Gilman just put our last forty-six acre piece in escrow two months ago. So as master developer, we have sold that entire area to tech companies and industrial companies. So we're sold out. Now, there is a lot of TRI that's being resold by investors now. But the price has gone way up because a lot of tech companies are coming in. And so there's a combination going on here why TRI two is needed for the region and further economic diversity. First off, all of the metro areas, Reno Sparks and firmly for that matter, are surrounded by BLM property federally held property. So there really is no further tracts of land that are large enough for a large industrial development available for industrial development. And secondly, as TRI is sold out and the pricing of the resale land has gone up significantly, tripled or quadrupled or may or gone up like five times in some cases. The land available for normal industrial development like manufacturing, fulfillment centers, the things that this region is perfectly suited for, as we have established at TRI, the land available has is essentially gone. So the only way for the region to continue economic diversification that is bringing in business that is different from gaming is to open up more land for development. Lance Gilman, our visionary identified early on that development because of the BLM land and federal land ownership, development has to go east out I eighty and south down USA Parkway. And USA Parkway is that road that you can see kind of coursing through the middle of TRI. So Lion County, in our view, in Fernley and Silver Springs is the epicenter, the new epicenter of industrial diversification, economic diversification in northern Nevada. Because you guys essentially have the only game in town as far as the potential for available space. And I think you're already feeling that. We had there was a twenty-four acre piece out in Fernley that came available a couple of years ago. We bid thirty-three million to buy that twenty-four hundred acres and we were outbid by twenty million. Let I mean, the investors see the same thing we do. The money is going to be flooding into Lion County, just like it did to Story County. And so we, you know, we've been leading this effort here for a few years. And so you'll see the little red area, that's an area that we identified as as highly suitable for TRI for TRI two project. And the southern boundary is on the city limits of Fernley. The western boundary, you can see that dark line is the county line between Lion County and Story County. And then you could see highway three ninety-five A kind of running up the the eastern side. So it's kind of a triangle. There's a total of about twenty thousand acres in that triangle, which is one fifth the size of TRI. But in TRI two, it's much better land. About half of that, as you all know, is the flat land there running parallel to ninety-five A. So it's great for for development. So here are our rough projections. If we get this federal land that that we're talking about in these lands, but if we're acquire, we're able to acquire all of it or most of it. We think about nine to ten thousand acres in that twenty thousand acre triangle are developable for industrial. So that's quite large and that's large enough for us to justify putting in the major upfront investment that it's going to take. We think about seven, we can get about seventy-five large companies or large sites in there. An annual payroll of about two hundred and fifty million and a capital investment of about five to eight billion with the buyers that come in. We know these figures are good ones because we have data from TRI. And at TRI right now, there's about thirty thousand jobs, hundred and fifty companies. Our annual payroll out of TRI is about a billion dollars a year. And the companies there are funding about another billion dollars a year in construction contracts. So this is a reasonable extrapolation off of known figures from TRI. Now, to be fair and and comprehensive here, TRI two probably won't attract, at least initially, the big high density companies like data center because of water needs. But we are working on that, too. We're working with ways to develop more water for that region, but at least initially, so it'll be it'll be normal kind of cookie cutter type industrial and like manufacturing that would make up this. And the biggest part is this as far as community. We've had to commit to get the bill through the Senate to reserve a part of our project for attainable housing, which is just as badly needed, has the same dynamics as as economic diversification. There's not enough space for attainable housing. And that's a strength that Lion County has, that with Fernley and Silver Springs, there is already attainable housing there. But this is we've we've reserved a part of our project for attainable housing or committed to. And it's and going forward, that the revenue flow to the county and the city should be significant. When we came into Story County, their general fund budget, they were on the verge of bankruptcy. They were on the tax watch list by the State Department of Taxation. Their general fund was three point seven million when we came in about twenty years ago. And today it's approaching forty million. And that entire increase is due to TRI over and above the abatements that were that were that were granted for for some of our larger companies. So that was that is cash coming into the county. And within five more years, once the first part of the Tesla abatements go away, it'll add another fifteen million to the to the general fund. So their general fund for four thousand residents in Story County will be around fifty to sixty million per year. That's for the general fund look. So we bring companies that come in, we don't do build the suits. We sell land and bring companies in who put roots in the community, who hire locals and who are committed to the community because they own land and own that facility. So we think we bring a lot of benefit to the local counties. And I think it's why the commission previously supported us. So this is kind of where we are now. You're going to see the 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 squares there are sections of land, six hundred and forty acres apiece. The green squares are BLM property. And you'll see they're checkerboarded. And this is leftover from the from the old rail days of Union Pacific, when the government gave rail companies a checkerboarded a land plan with the federal government to help fund the construction of the railroad. Obviously, with checkerboarded land, it's impossible to develop. You can't put roads across the corner, right, with the feds. So the green is the checkerboarded BLM land. The purple is land that our investor, Don Roger Norman, has already purchased. It's about ten square miles of land that we have in ownership. And we have purchased one additional section of this not shown in purple, but it's 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 on the east side, just below the other two purple sections there. And so but we've got about ten square miles. The the brown sections are owned by other private owners that obviously we'd be working with. And we haven't heard anybody in those other private owners who are who are not in favor of our project. Matter of fact, we made, I think, offers to buy land to most of them. So so that's the situation. That's why it's vital in order for us to get the infrastructure in place, the water lines, the wastewater lines, the roads to to acquire this federal land. And all of this land, every single green section on that map has already been designated for disposal by the BLM previously. So this map shows the land that we've already purchased in blue. And then you'll see the pink sections there. And we call it RFP property because those BLM sections were already covered and approved by Congress in a lands bill in twenty fifteen. So that is already passed through Congress. We have right now pending with the city of Fernley, a purchase and sale agreement to purchase those sections from Fernley and for us to pay a lot of money upfront so firmly can process it through the BLM, which they have to do. So that is already covered under a prior lands bill. And as you can see, that would really help us fill in the fill in the map a little bit enough to perhaps get rolling. But the key issue today is this one. And this is if the sections noted there, the green sections are BLM property and the ones that have text in the section are covered under the current Fernley lands bill. So this is the one that we have that's already been introduced in the House and hopefully will be introduced in the Senate. So Stephanie, are you on? And I'll let you take the next two.
Stephanie, can you raise your hand?
You should be along.
For doing that, I couldn't find the hand raise icons. My apologies. Thank you all for having me. I just want to give a brief overview of the status of the bill legislatively speaking in Congress. So we'll start with the House of Representatives. The bill has been introduced by Congressman Ambide as part of the broader Northern Nevada Economic Development and Conservation Act. It was also introduced in that same package last year. It's on its way to committee committee consideration, along with the other Nevada priorities contained within that bill and some of the other Nevada priorities that might be outside of that bill. Congressman Ambide, you all know very well, and he is working very closely with his leadership. Or he tells us he's working very closely with his leadership on the committee to make sure that this bill gets considered and heard in a timely fashion so that it can advance as quickly as possible. On the Senate side, there are new requirements or clarified requirements for lands bills to be considered by the senators. One is that lands bills must be countywide. There has to be robust community input. And there's some examples of that on what they're looking for. And each parcel must demonstrate economic or public impact or value. So obviously, in the context of the Fernley bill, there's clear economic value for each proposed parcel, since there's a planned project going into that area. We are here presenting to all of you to make sure that we begin at least are part of community input and there's public discussion. And then, of course, you are the county. So we are, you know, proposing this idea to you as the county are presenting this idea to you, excuse me, I want to use the right language for what we're doing here for county to to mull over. So in terms of what that means in terms of status, we don't have a Senate companion yet because the friendly bill would need to be a part of a broader Lion County bill in order to be considered by the Senate. However, you know, there are different ways that that bills become laws. As I know, you know, from from watching the Schoolhouse Rock special, that's how I learned as well. Including a house can be passed from a bill can pass from the House and go to the Senate. But the best way is for there to be a companion. And I think it's a that's a good segue to talk about why speed matters in terms of Congressman Amade lining up consideration on his side and the senators trying to to match that. So with that, I'll hand things back over to Chris.
Thank you. Thanks, Stephanie. So I want to talk this last slide is perhaps the most important. This is the reason we're here today and a little bit different from the prior times we've come in and given you an update. The requirement that the bill actually be sponsored by the county, not just supported, is a new one. It just came up a couple of months ago from from the United States Senate. We've been at this three years and we put probably two million dollars into this effort already. And it's a there's a lot of timing that is critical here in terms of two things. First off, we've had our capital investment, which is in the high millions to purchase the the federal property. And more capital investment needed for us to build the water lines, the water tanks, this the the wastewater lines, the roads, the drainage. There's a lot of money that goes up front into projects like this. And we've our investors had that money set aside this entire time. And so getting this done quickly now in the third year that we've been after this is critical. I want to say the county has been awesome. The reason we're here is we believe in this county and the people in this county, or our investor wouldn't have been spending that kind of money to to purchase the land and fund this effort so far. And we believe in your staff. Mayor McIntyre, who I see is here on Zoom, actually helped build TRI. Andrew worked personally with Lance Gilman during his prior jobs in in helping bring TRI, bring in business. We're here because we believe in it and we're here for the long haul. But to get this land, we can't get off the start the starting line until this land gets processed through Congress and is and is acquired. The other, the other main issue is Donnie has a pipeline of buyers right now. We've got it stacked up. We get leads every day for industrial. And there is nowhere to put them. One of the tech companies that came into TRI, one of their decision makers in our negotiating negotiation meeting with him said this, he said, and this is back in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, when Tesla and Switch came into the park, he says, you know, these big Wall Street companies or tech companies, they're like a flock of geese. They go flying overhead out of shotgun range. And one of them sees a cornfield or a milo field, and so one goose will drop down. And if that goose doesn't get shot, the rest of the flock comes in and lands. And that's what happens. But the reverse is true. If there's no corner milo field for them to land in, they will go elsewhere and find another one. We, in competing for these companies, the Wall Street companies that we have in the park, which is about ninety-five percent of the land that has been bought by Wall Street companies. It is a contact sport. Texas, Arizona, New Mexico, Utah, now Florida, they are throwing all kinds of goodies up. And so we have a great game plan with how we do business with fast track permitting and 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 accommodating, you know, enabling businesses to get to get get built quickly. You have got great property there to do that, to bring in jobs and capital investment. But the longer this goes, these companies will find somewhere else. They'll go to Utah, someone else, or the other states will start throwing in so many goodies that that's too hard to say no to. For an instance, our power here is about six point five, six and a half cents per kilowatt hour. Well, Arizona's offering half price power. So for these high density companies like data centers or or high density companies like Tesla and Panasonic, we have in the park, getting half price power pays off big time over long haul. And we have to compete against that. So I just asked, and I know the county is putting together its own package of 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 needs in terms of federal property. And I know Andrew, the county manager is working very hard on that. But I ask you, if that package cannot be finalized quickly, please consider sending the Fernley or the Fernley lands bill that was entered into the House forward immediately to the Senate. I think the Senate is going to be a slog regardless, simply because of the institutional issues they have there on how they deal with lands bills. So we need to get this to the Senate quickly, if possible. And so I just ask you to keep that in mind. Again, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your time. We're here because we believe in you all. We believe in Andrew and we believe in Mayor McIntyre. So I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I'm guessing in Arizona, their power bill will still be pretty high. Couple of thing, couple of things you mentioned. I guess my first question would be, how do you develop more water?
So right now, we dealt a lot with Fernley. We have purchased about a couple of hundred acre feet of water, which is enough to get our, even if we get all this land, that's enough to get us rolling. Up until twenty fifteen, all of TRI was run off of four hundred acre feet of water. So with the water that our investor has already purchased and we have in hand and we have banked with the city of Fernley, we have enough to get rolling. But there are, we are, we are constantly in the market out there for. But there are, we are, we are constantly in the market out there for water. We field offers. About every other week and we make offers on water and we've done that. At TRI for for a long time. There are also a number of importation projects. That are out there that are looking for ways to import water from other areas in the state uh. And and so that's a possibility. I mean, we haven't. We're working with one group in particular right now who's a. Who's got some immense water rights and they've got capital to to do it and we're working on it. It's not. To the point of being able to call it um. A done deal or to call it feasible, yeah, but it's being looked at. So there are options there. But as of right now, we have enough to get rolling if we can get this land.
All right, Chairman Hockday, if I may. I struggled with some of the comments about the general fund. Could you go back and? Maybe revisit that, clarify that. So the general fund went from three point four million to something amount and that was. Who was taking full credit for that?
We were. And so here, I'll just, I'll just add some add some color there. In nineteen ninety-seven, which was the year before. Uh we, as the master developer, bought that hundred and seven thousand acres or most of it. The entire general fund budget for Story County was three point seven million. They were buying, they were on the.
Okay, uh so you just cleared it up. You're that story county.
Story County.
Okay, you didn't, all right. They're talking about Fernley and I'm like, what? So, okay. All right.
My point being that the tax revenue generated from TRI.
Gotcha. I I I. I will not dispute that one bit. Um and then um. The um Wadsworth exit highway over. Um I don't know if you've driven down Main Street of Fernley.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but. Without that highway being a guaranteed almost. I would struggle to. Support this project because without that. It's dead in the water as far as I'm concerned. I don't know how you'd get there.
And 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 we view that road as critical also. So here here's what we've done. First off, we we've already funded and and done engineering. On routes for that road and identified. You know, how it would go through the park, assuming that we get to federal land. Second, we've had ongoing briefings. With uh uh NDOT. Uh the last time we were down there, I think it was maybe six or eight months ago and we briefed. The chief of engineering and the director of NDOT. And we are setting up another meeting shortly with NDOT and the state treasurer, Mr. Zach. Conan and we're trying to identify, we we believe. That between federal funds and and there are some funds that the uh Go Ed. Has available for different uh issues. We think that those funds could be available. This road is very doable. It's uh. It's about nine miles long. And by by way of comparison, USA Parkway is about twenty-five miles long. So it would be a shorter version of USA Parkway, but in our vision, it would be an exact replica. And so it'd be divided four lane with, you know, there'd have to be a bridge over the tracks, the canal and the. And the river, but we built, we built all that on USA Parkway. That was done on our guy back in two thousand and five. So we've done this before and it's very doable. And so we've been working with NDOT, but but we agree with you. It's a, that is a, that's a must have. For the truck traffic that we're in envisioning.
Thank you for that. Um and then one last point, Chairman Hockday, if I may, um. Obviously, housing is always an issue. Um we have quite a few story county employees that live in. Lion County being a past principal. I'm fully. In chatting with kids, we'd always chat about their parents and where and a lot of them were living in. Or working in story county and that's what brought them there. So um just. In touching base, how many housing units were you planning on this property?
We were gonna leave, you know, and people are asking how many units and what's your definition of attainable? And we were gonna leave that up to. Mayor McIntyre and and to the county to tell us, but we're looking at a section of land, six hundred and forty acres. Uh set aside for attainable housing. And again, we've had to commit. It's not in the bill, but we've had to commit eyeball to eyeball to the senators and their staff on that. And we, you know, to us a handshake means something. And so, you know, how many ever you can fit into six hundred and forty acres is is what we're committing. And that's a sizable amount. And that's a, by the way, that's a strength that Lion County has. Same thing that story county has. If you guys, you guys have the housing available here right now. And and if this project is here, they wouldn't have to drive thirty minutes to uh forty-five minutes to the job in TRI or Reno. It'd be right here in the county and in and in the. So six hundred and forty acres for how many of the units there?
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Oh, Commissioner. Okay, well, we got one from Commissioner Keller. You're on.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions for you. Uh first of all, you started talking about. How much uh? How we need all this land because we. We don't have anymore. Uh I'd clarify that as you don't have anymore. We have twelve thousand acres in Northern Nevada Industrial Center. That you sold to this side. That is ready to develop. There's a, there's all the people you sold to and trick already that they're trying to develop. So there's plenty of land. I. I I differ with you on that. Then you said uh. You're gonna leave it to for someone else to define subsidize. Well, there's no such word for that for uh housing because you're gonna sell it for the most you can get. For whatever it is. Uh unless you guys plan on doing uh. You didn't say subsidized, excuse me, you said obtainable. But the only way to do it is subsidized, in my opinion. And I don't, I don't think anybody's gonna subsidize that. Uh. You said that you had. Three point four million increased in tax revenue. But you didn't talk about the burdens because there is no housing that came with that trick project. Now, city of Fernley is gonna end up with all the burdens. Of the housing and the the demand that's gonna be because of that. Uh I didn't hear anything about uh. The open space that's gonna be left up there. North Lion County's already talked about how they're gonna defend that because that. That'll be under their jurisdiction if something doesn't get done. You can answer that. I probably have a couple more.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. So a couple thoughts. First off, that's right. We're not saying that the housing would have to be subsidized. It's just that we are reserving space for attainable housing. As the Senate requiring us to do. Um secondly, on the burden of. The community having housing the workers. Um in terms of TRI. Yes, it's true. Eighty-five to ninety percent of our workers live in Reno and Sparks, most of them north of the of I eighty. But we're also TRI is putting a billion dollars of year. A billion, billion dollars a year in payroll right into that same community. And through their employees, going into all the gas stations, the restaurants, the grocery stores, the the just casinos. And we and we have hired most of the, I'd say sixty percent of the construction contracts. In TRI are fulfilled by like by Washington County Reno and Sparks contractors. And so. That's probably another six hundred million going into that community. And the the most of the of the folks that moved here to take jobs at TRI. At most is five thousand uh gain on on the on the population. So the net economic effect. Into the surrounding community where the workers live. Is in the hundreds of millions to the positive. And that's, that is confirmed. In the periodic Tesla impact studies that Go Ed has done. Go Ed, their impact study says it's several billion dollars a year. Going into the surrounding communities in net positive uh flow. And Mr. Commissioner, I'm sorry, I lost that last question. It was uh. The topic was, I can't remember.
Well, you had, I had, uh, I'm gonna stay on what you just said, but the other one was fire. Uh for the open spaces that you're gonna end up with because of the terrain. You, when you talk about annual payroll, two hundred and fifty million. Uh are you, are you leaving in the CEOs and those uh? Into that payroll that don't live here, that take out a big chunk of the amount of money? In other words, I'm I'm trying not to import problems into our area.
Yes, sir.
With low income uh things because then. Then we end up with just more apartments, more everything and more demand. Uh what's the average of the everyday person working out there? And does it take two people to own a home that? To be a part of this?
Yes, sir. Good, great questions. Um yes, that payroll number, it does include that everybody that's on a a W two payroll in the park. And and again, we know that, we know these numbers. Eh in a large part from the Tesla reports that are done, they're done annually and then and then an impact study every four years. But I will say this, that that. The money that flows into the community. Through the expenditure payroll and service and supply contracts. Is gonna be, you know, that old saying, the rising tide lifts all boats. And so I thi- I think you all can feel there's a lot of money coming in already up in Fernley. And a lot of money coming in already into Silver Springs just by the impact. Next door of of TRI. And so I think it's gonna help all the small businesses. That uh that are that are in the area. So yes, that does include that. And you know. You might be surprised at at who who might set up shop in terms of a house. Here in Fernley or Lion County going forward, once these companies come in. The good news is, again, we sell property. We make sure that these. Company, we don't lease it. We don't do build a suit. The companies that we bring in are buying the property. They're gonna own that facility. And we expect them to be committed to the community. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, for the question.
You're getting to talk about fire?
Fire and and that was was the question, sir?
So there's gonna be a lot of open space of what I can see, especially up in the higher regions. Uh because you just can't build on a bunch of that area. So that goes down to Lion Cat, North Lion County Fire District to take care of. Are they where, you know, what's their response? What 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 have you talked to them about?
Well, we we haven't yet because we don't know what land we're gonna have. And so and we're waiting for the bill. So it's kind of. You know, chicken or the egg. And for us, we gotta have this land first before we can start laying out a plan in terms of. You know, where the fire station's going, where the road goes, where the drainage, where the utilities go. But. But I will say this, um just like in TRI. About half of TRI is just not buildable. And Mr. Commissioner, you're exactly right. A good portion of the area in our project area is also not developable because it's those. High, the the kind of hills and the swales and the foothills. Going into the eastern dorsal there that are are in are in our project area. But that was on purpose that we added that land in, just like we did for TRI because. We believe, it hasn't come up yet, but against. In the bill, but it's come up in conversation with the Senator's staff. They are expecting us to leave open space for environmental, for recreation. And for for green space. And so that's why it's included in there. So there would not be, the development would primarily be in in the flat grounds along a ninety-five A. And maybe up into a little of the hills, just like it is TRI. And I know at TRI, we uh, we had to build uh the county building that's on uh. Peru Drive, we built it for the county and the and the the first responder station there, we built that out for the county. But. If we get to full build out, it probably will take. Another uh fire station out there that, of course, the rent tax revenue is coming from these companies. Would more than cover just like they do in uh in TRI. So, you know, we have to see. We'll be in close contact once, once we acquire the land. With the city and fire in terms of where the, how the infrastructure is positioned. But we're, we understand that story county had no money for any of that. And so. Our company, Roger Norman and Lance Gilman, paid for all the roads, all the drainage. Uh we built our own treatment plant. We built the fire station and so we kind of understand that that that's, that's part of the situation here. Or consideration. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you. Uh Chairman Hockaday, I'm gonna uh hold off on asking any more questions. I want to hear what other people have to say and then uh. Maybe even get the mayor to talk about the project, but he his feelings are on it. Uh and after a public comment, I'd like to have a chance to ask more questions if I have to.
Okay, I'll get back to you. Uh Commissioner Hendricks. Any questions, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh thank you for the presentation. I'm I'm excited about the project. I I hope to see it go forward here in the near future. Man, we'll we'll see uh. How the lands bills shake out.
Mr. Chair, I see Stephanie Walker has her hand up.
Right, Stephanie Walker has her hand up. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Thanks, guys. I just wanted to clarify, and I do think we said so, but I wanted to be clear that the way the bill is written, the land is transferred to the city of Fernley. At fair market value. So and try, the the TRI project would. Be in communication with the city of Fernley to acquire the land. The bill would not transfer it directly to the city of Fernley. I think that's an important point. When it comes to some of these. Issues that have been brought up in terms of final agreements, things like that, including housing. Um those kinds of things would be dictated by any kind of sale agreements. The the congressional bill does not give this land to TRI directly.
And so so how that process works is. Once it passes Congress, there's a, there's a pretty uh rigorous process. That the city of Fernley has to process the request through BLM. And in our proposal to the city of Fernley for that first forty-two hundred acres. We have promised to to, we pay them upfront a hundred thousand dollars. To fund the consultants needed to run that BLM process. And so that gets it through. The BLM, the BLM appraises the property at the time. And requires the city to pay BLM that appraised value. And our proposal to the city on this first forty-two hundred acres and 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 the next one, if it passes Congress. Is that we would fund the purchase price a hundred percent at the appraisal number by the BLM. So that Fernley is not out of pocket one penny on any of this.
Mayor McIntyre, did you have any comments?
Oh, there we go. I was trying to unmute myself, but I I guess I had to wait for you to do it. Um. Yeah, you know, this this project is uh would be really good for Fernley's economic development. Um. I guess uh we're talking with Chris and and Roger. Um Lance, that uh I think um what Jake, uh Commissioner Jacobson was talking about as far as. Uh traffic uh is is a big concern to us. So I guess my question to Chris would be, at what point of the, if the land was acquired by. Uh TRI. At what point of this development would that bypass road be constructed?
Great. Thank, thank you, Mayor McIntyre. So uh if we go back to TRI, I think it's a good blueprint and. In in two thousand and three. Lance started selling land at TRI and all we had was that Patrick Bridge. And the first part of Waltham Way down there by Wild Horse Canyon Drive, you have to come up over the hill. And that's all, the only infrastructure we had at the time. And so. They they started selling uh industrial land along Waltham. Coming out from the Patrick Interchange. And so they did that, they got companies in over the next two years. And so then we started putting in water, wastewater. And in two thousand and five, it was clear the park was successful. And so at that point, Roger and Lance decided to put in USA Parkway. That was on our original uh development plan, the original infrastructure plan. So USA Parkway and that and that uh. Yeah, intersection on I eighty came about like two or three years. After we actually started selling property, because at the beginning. Number one, it takes a long time, right, to to process anything involving I eighty. And we expect the same things true here. But really, the traffic increase that doesn't happen all at once. We have to get the development agreement done. We have to get CCNRs done. And and approved by uh the mayor and the city council. And so there's gonna be a build out and a marketing ramp up. So it would be probably, you know, if if we could get it done, if we could get the land tomorrow, if we get funding by Go Ed or the. State or the feds, I mean, we we we'd be all over it immediately. But in all likelihood, I think the best assumption is it's gonna be kind of like TRI. We probably get this project off the ground, maybe with an entry off of ninety-five A or at to start with. Have start selling some land, build some key roads. While we're processing that that bypass road with NDOT and the feds. Uh for funding. And so that road, just just like USA Parkway, we got that in there before. Waltham or the interstate was uh was overrun. And so I think we'd probably follow that course time wise.
Well, I I think the difference is you have a, you had Waltham Way before you built um. USA Parkway, whereas we don't have that. Well, I I think the difference is you have a, you had Waltham Way before you built um, USA Parkway, whereas we don't have that. That same scenario as far as how you're going to get all your trucks and stuff in once you start building because Coming down to Main Street, you know, as you come off exit forty six. We have both those projects going on both the north and south side on the west side of town. And that's going to create a lot of traffic along with the traffic. Uh, for you to start your building and stuff. I mean, um. It just seems to me like the traffic is going to be a really big um. Hiccup as far as the project goes. Um. But but like I say, I I I think it's a good project. I think it'd be good for firmly, be good for Lion County. And um, so I I'm actually in favor of the project, but I but I'd like to see a little bit more A priority as far as getting the bypass uh, started.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, just and we're gonna, we are, we actually are, as I said, having a meeting with the new N dot director. Uh, the Porter Group uh, has very good relationships with her because she was the N dot representative in in Washington. Until she was appointed. And so, Mr. Mayor and for uh, county manager, we're going, we will hopefully have you guys at those meetings with the state treasurer and GOED. And end up, but we agree with you on how important that road is. And Roger identified that right off the bat.
Yeah. Um, as far as infrastructure and stuff goes, I mean, um, we'll definitely um. Have to sit down and talk about that. There's been a couple um. Different things uh, brought to the city as far as uh, how they want to do the infrastructure, whether they Tie on to our existing, which um, only goes out right by the airport uh, as far as water goes.
Sure.
And sewer. So I mean, those are things we'll just have to uh, be talked about to see what's Going to be the best for the city as well as the project.
Yes, sir. And and we uh, the city of firmly made very clear to us all along that The city does not have excess revenue to fund infrastructure construction. And our investor is well aware of that. And we've been through that already at T R I. Uh, but we put in about a quarter billion dollars of infrastructure construction and roads, drainage, our own treatment. A facility for wastewater, wastewater lines, reclaim lines, potable water lines. We paid for all that at T R I. So we've been down that road.
Yep. Thank you. Uh, and you know, as far as uh, uh, Commissioner Keller was talking about um. The the fire and stuff, and I think you bring up a a good point that uh, at some point, um. There will definitely have to be an added uh, fire station up in that area.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Yeah, I had a question. Is the intent to annex this into the city of firmly?
Ma'am, I believe it's already within the city.
Is it just right on the edge?
Anything further?
Andrew Haskin, for the record, I can answer that question. Um, that all that land is within the city limits.
Uh, have uh, Ms. Bernand.
Good morning again, Amanda Bernand, B R I N N A N D. And um. I know Lion County needs uh, more business and these checkerboarded B L M parcels are very difficult to access for the public. I'm aware. Um, but however, federal land is public land for all of us to use. And I just, uh, the one thing I Other than in the presentation was robust, sorry, robust Um, interaction with the public. Um, and I just want to make sure that there Is information provided to the public on what's going on. Um, I think a lot of times people oppose oppose projects because They don't really understand or they haven't been informed of what's going on. So I would like to see um, some public meetings or something like this, community workshops. Something so that um. The residents of Lion County can understand this more and maybe provide some buy in or the opposite. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. We agree. We've been, we've given presentations to the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, it was a packed house in firmly. Uh, we've talked to the firmly, uh, city council, we've been engaging with city staff all along, but It any, if there is an opportunity to talk about this project to the public that The commissioners or the staff or anyone thinks is would be a good place, we are all about that. And Lance, Lance, you know, our visionary guy that The uh, visionary for T R I has always engaged in public outreach every chance we get. And that is a good strategy. Uh, and we're going to continue that. So Anyone has something that they they want us to come make a presentation at, we're happy to do so.
Okay, Commissioner Keller, we're back to you.
Thank you. Uh, and I thank you, Stephanie uh, Walker uh, for clarifying that because it does make It a lot, lot clearer so that uh, the city has a a lot more to say about it. And uh, Mayor McIntyre's comments. Uh, carry a lot of weight with me as far as uh, going forward with the city. And so uh, along with the city council. You uh, talked about that bypass. Now, is that going to be done uh, to N dot standards? In the beginning, if if you go forward with it. Because I know back when uh, we talked to Governor Gibbons back there a long time ago with uh, Trek. They took uh, over that entirely, the state did, to make USA Parkway. Just so that we could get the NEPA process going. But that wasn't built to end out standards on the one side, and now it has to be. So it was county, then then uh, end out standards. And I was just curious if that is the, the way you're going to go forward with that bypass?
So uh, Mr. Commissioner, I my my understanding is that We funded the building of USA Parkway and interchange and all the bridges. And that the state of Nevada approved all those plans. And as well as the county, and those plans were checked against design standards at that time. Uh, now, since the, we built the first five miles of USA Parkway divided four lane. And and we built, and we paid for the bridge and the and the uh, the bridges and the interchange itself. And then the state built out the last fifteen miles. From from our terminus on USA Parkway to Silver Springs as part of the Tesla deal. They promised Uh, Elon Musk that they would build uh, the rest of that road. And then they upgraded the rest Based on the wear and tear that it had suffered over the last fifteen years. But my my understanding is The original USA Parkway, the plans and the design was approved by both the state And the county, or else it it never would have been built. Um, but our our view is, is that You know, USA Parkway is a divided four lane, the main arterial. And so our vision is, is that this bypass road would be just like USA Parkway. And built to the standards today for a divided uh, four lane. And there might be additional requirements by whoever's doing the funding, be it GOED or Or the feds or 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 the state or wherever funds come from. But, you know, you you can't. We've learned at T R I, you can't go in on the cheap for roads. Because with all the truck traffic, we probably have six or seven thousand big rigs a day coming in and out of T R I right now. If you go in on the cheap for roads and you don't, you build them properly, they'll deteriorate and Now I use it unsafe and can kill people, but but you you it stops business. You get a bad reputation. We like good roads, well-built roads, because that's attractive to the tech companies and the other companies coming in.
Commissioner Keller.
So what I was looking at, and and this can be down the road because uh, like Stephanie said. But I'm looking at it after you uh, after the roads are all built and everything else. You, yeah, you you pay for that road, but actually everybody that bought the land pays for it. You don't actually pay for yourself. Uh, but we we maintain it. And that's who I'm going to see is who maintains it. Whether the city of firmly is going to be maintaining it, or is it going to go over to N dot? And built to those things so where N dot can maintain it. That's that's where I was going with that question.
That's a great point. Uh, just uh, kind of review the bidding on USA Parkway. So We paid for the intersection on I eighty, and then we built and paid for the first five miles. But that was a county road until the Tesla deal.
Right.
The county owned it at first, and then the state took it over as part of the Tesla deal. So At some point, you know, when the companies coming in started getting to a certain size, the state took it over. So it, you know, who knows um. How this will sort out. But uh, as the main arterial, to me, it would make sense to be a state highway, but We're subject to the, to the commission here and the county manager and the mayor in terms of what the preference is on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay, Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I'm going to, uh, that was one of my points. Uh, Mr. Keller just brought up the, who owns that road when this is built? I was just on USA Parkway or, yeah, USA Parkway, I believe on Sunday. And it seemed to me within that first mile, that right-hand lane was already starting to deteriorate. Um, and I'm just curious, is that, does that fall on the city of firmly, the county? And we don't know that yet because we don't know if N dot will take. It would be my preference that it was an N dot road, obviously.
And 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 that part of, of all of USA right now, it's a state, it's a state highway. That's our state route, uh, S R four thirty nine. They have made its response responsibly. So I'm not going to say anything to criticize N dot at this time because they they took it over and built the rest of the road out. But it Yeah, it's uh, it's it gets seen some wear and tear from these companies for sure. But our preference is state route also.
Anything further from commissioners? And I want to thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Commissioner, thank you.
Uh, a presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Actually, the, sorry. So it was presentation only. However, you did public comment, I thought, because
But mainly because advisory board, that's
Okay.
All right. That was why I called on her in her area. Okay. Um, I mean, I have no problem with if somebody has a public comment. But All right. Oh, Tony from Dayton. Well, that's fine. We, uh, Tony.
Yeah, you you can do public participation. I I would recommend it at this point.
Like everybody to get a chance. That's the point. Yeah, Tony from Dayton. Yes, no, you go ahead.
Yeah, for the record, Tony Stevenson from Dayton. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, commissioners. Um, because I'm not familiar with this plan, I was taken aback by a few of the comments that were made in the presentation. One of them being that they're going to have to buy water to make this whole thing viable. I believe that once we are in a position where we have to buy water. To make an industrial or residential area. Work. We're kind of putting ourselves in an hostage situation here when it comes to the prices of water. We've seen that happen most recently down in a community just outside Scottsdale, Arizona. Residents went from paying a hundred and fifty a month for their water to three hundred plus, and the price keeps rising. That's got to be a huge concern To our commissioners and the folks of firmly who already are paying An above average price for water. And then there's, you know, no answers on what are we going to do about the required first responders? The extra burden that's going to put on an area that doesn't even have a hospital. Um, the traffic, there's a whole list of concerns. And they want the county lands bill to get tied into this to make it more sellable to the senators. Uh, it just seems like, you know, there's a lot of details that are missing. And they're trying to push this through. I get it. But Doesn't sound like a real good deal for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else before we move on? Okay, let's um, looking at the time here, um. I believe we should uh, consider lunch.
Mr. Chair, can we do thirteen I real quick?
Thirteen I?
Yeah. We had a request to
Yeah, um. Yeah, real quick, not a problem. Go ahead. For possible action, thirteen I am reading for possible action, approve an emergency contract with Perry and Sons in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand for emergency flood repairs. You're on, sir.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager, for the record. Um. Yeah, I'm bringing this contract forward as a part of the the emergency flood repairs that um, we did along the Walker River. Um, when we started that project, you you'll remember we had an emergency meeting on May twentieth. Um. And um, at that time, we were were working with Perry and Sons to complete um. Those repairs. When I talked to Mr. Perry, um. So he had said that if there was, there was funds available for reimbursement on that or That um, that would be great. But if not, I mean, we were still going to work on getting those repairs made. Um, talk with with Controller Foley on that. Um. And so this is the proposal that we're we're bringing forward as a contract of three hundred thousand, not to exceed three hundred thousand through the end of
Okay. Any commissioner, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Hask, I just want to thank you for your leadership in this effort. As I told you before, I will never get on you for being proactive, but if you hadn't been proactive. And we taking these steps, you're going to be flooded right now. That is just a simple fact. Perry and Sons stepped up. We couldn't have done it without them. And we need to recognize them some ways sometime in the future. But Now, what you guys and and what Perry and Sons, by you guys, I mean, you and your staff and and our county employees, because as I said before, we have the best county staff in the state. So um, I I have no further comments. Just just want to thank you for it.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Um, in looking through that rate, um, I think Uh, T R I that just left should have maybe checked out The rates that Perry and Sons are charging and the speed at which they moved. You might be out of the gardening business and into uh, The construction business. So I thought those rates were very fair. Um. I think because we were so proactive, I think there's probably a chance In listening to uh, the insurance folks that we may get reimbursed on some of that, whether we get reimbursed or not, um. I think the actions that were taken saved the county and the city A great deal more than three hundred thousand dollars for sure. Uh, the mess, the cleanup, the destruction that that would have caused. And I'm not trying to Um, in taking a tour of the, I'm not trying to um, downgrade the fact that some people's Places were still damaged by the floodwater. And for that, you know, I recognize, I recognize that and and have great empathy for them. But But uh, the, what that saved, um. The city of Yerington is really remarkable. And so I agree, I'm I know this was part of my commissioner comments, and I'll revisit it again, but I See Mr. Holman back there and and I'm surprised he's not as skinny as Josh, uh, as much running as he did. Um, but some people's metabolism, buddy, just doesn't work that way. So. But at any rate, Mr. Holman and your crew and and uh, Ms. Taylor and and uh, obviously Perry and Sons. I I very much support this three hundred thousand.
Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said. Uh. I I really appreciate what they've done. Uh, as far as recognizing them in the future, I'd like to recognize everybody that was part of this. I mean, there was a lot of effort out there and Andrew did a fantastic job, and so did our emergency management team. Uh, with that being said, uh, after public comment, I'd be honored to make this a motion.
Okay, I've got that on the record here. And I I definitely been out on the line with uh, Mr. Haskin, Mr. Holman, Commissioner Jacobson, and I know everybody has taken a big interest in protecting Yerington, and I I appreciate that in the district here. I'm pretty sure that the audience would now be in about a foot of water. Had things not been taken care of, we might have our feet in the water right now had the Had the riverbank not been built up. So I definitely appreciate the fast action that everybody took. Yeah, I mean, for miles and miles of I mean, for miles and miles of riverbank, uh, do feel bad about the people who did get flooded out on the west side. And, uh, hopefully in the future, we can mitigate some of those problems, so that we don't have that again. But I, I believe that, uh, this is well worth the three hundred thousand dollars for, um, amount of work that was done. Uh, way over that amount. I know it's way over that amount, but, uh, thank you for everybody in the county. And, uh, we have Commissioner Henderson.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think if we hadn't taken action, we'd have our feet in something a little worse than water.
That's true.
I believe.
Yes, I believe Perry and Sons are continuing to be out there working, are they not? Yes. Well, I'm very grateful for everything they've done and for you and Taylor. Um, this whole winter, you guys have been on point and ahead of the game, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So possible action, do I have a motion on this? Oh, public, yes, public comment, uh, and Commissioner Keller, your hands up again. Did you want to make another comment?
I was just gonna make a motion, but you're going to public comments, I'll just.
I, I know you're gonna make the motion, uh, we do have, uh, Mr. Foley coming up to the microphone. Go ahead, Mr. Foley.
Uh, Josh Foley, line county comfor, for the record, since this item was taken out of order, there isn't actually budget available yet because the contingency transfer hasn't happened, so if you make the motion for it, please just authorize it being funded out of contingency till we can get back to the other item that actually proposes transferring. Thank you.
Okay, did you hear that? Okay, super. Uh, any other comments? Okay, Commissioner Keller, go ahead.
I move to approve an emergency contract with Perry and Sons in the amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars out of contingency for emergency flood repairs.
Second, second from, or motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, so thirteen I is complete. Uh, Commissioner Jacobson, did you have a comment? Okay.
I just turned my thing off.
Okay, um, quick discussion here, break for lunch until one. Everybody agreeable with that? So it is eleven fifty-three, we will reconvene at one o'clock. I'm gonna reconvene the meeting today, uh, for the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners, it is one o'clock. We are going to move on to item eight, Commissioner and County Manager Reports. Start with Commissioner Hendricks.
Okay, um, I attended the Silver Springs High School graduation, the Silver Springs Advisory Board, the Dayton Advisory Board, Yarrington High School graduation, the Comstock Historical District, and the Planning Commission.
And Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Had a, a few meetings I've attended lately as well, along with Commissioner Hendricks, we were at the, well, she was there, I was actually on Zoom for the Dayton Regional Advisory Board meeting. Uh, so I attended the Mount House Advisory Board meeting and, uh, wanna report that both, uh, the NACO Public Lands Natural Resources Committee and SLU PAC have authorized letters to be submitted to the BLM regarding the Conservation and Landscape Act that we will be discussing later on the agenda. Um, that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chairman Hockday. Um, I wanna thank Mr. Haskin for the tour um, of all the work that was done, uh, to prevent flooding, um. And then, uh, Mr. Holman, I, he looks like he ducked out, I kinda thanked him earlier, but him and his staff for putting in, I don't know how many hours of overtime and just the incredible work they did, um, on what could probably be a permanent solution uh, to flooding, uh, at least on the east side of that, of that river. And, uh, obviously Perry and Sons, um, for their, not just their equipment, but also the manpower, um, and, and the resources that they, we, we were able to utilize. And I don't think we got charged a dime for any of their material. I mean, just, I don't, I wouldn't even venture to begin to guess how much money that saved, um. And of course, Ms. Taylor and everyone else that was involved in that, in that, in those efforts, uh, ongoing efforts, I should say. Tended a fundraiser for the Fernley Community Foundation, um, just wanna give a shout out for all they do for the community. Also attended a graduation for only high school, wish those kids well. And, uh, Bobby Barnes was in here earlier, um. I was hoping we got to this before he ducked out, but, uh, just want to thank him, I coached that guy and I don't know how, uh, how many years ago in high school football. Um, and I'd shared with him before break, just, uh, how I appreciated him and, and, uh, um, and then I believe he's had twenty-three years with the Sheriff's Department and retired, um. So, uh, I wanna thank him for his service there, um, and just, uh, let him know that I'm very proud of him. That's all I have, sir.
Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, I attended the Silver Springs Advisory Board, Silver Springs High School graduation. Uh, I didn't have any meetings or committee meetings last two weeks. Uh, I do plan on, as it was brought up earlier today, I wanted to talk on it. I'll be attending the Silver Springs, uh, middle school meeting for the school board. It's June twenty-seventh at six thirty. And they're gonna have that, uh, open meeting on the, I mean, the public comment on the agenda, and it, it just seems stupid to me how you would ever want the public to not be active with a board. You're there supposed to represent them, and to not have that just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I will be attending it, I encourage everybody else to attend too. I even heard, uh, one, one of the school board members saying that it was taking too much time. And, and to me, if you're an elected official and it's taking too much time, you shouldn't be an elected official. That's all I got.
Thank you. I attended the Walker River Irrigation District, uh, through Zoom and listened to the water reports, the irrigation delivery and things such as that, uh, which is pretty important to all of us right here in the fifth district. And, uh, we did have a, uh, meeting that was canceled on the fourteenth for, uh, kind of local emergency planning. Uh, but, uh, several meetings and we'll see several meetings this year, we'll also get to that, uh, agenda later. Um, I see our county manager stand up for his report and I'll report a little bit more at the end of the meeting. So, Mr. Haskin, go ahead.
Right, Andrew Haskin, line county manager, for the record. Um, so my time has still pretty much been dominated by, uh, the flooding and the emergency repairs. Fortunately, most of the repairs have been made at this point, most of the recommendations that the, Army Corps of Engineers have recommended have been implemented, um, so we've, we, uh, been working on that. The flows on the river stabilized, um, for the last week or so, they've been right around, like, jumping kind of between thirty-three hundred and thirty-five hundred. Prior to that, we had hit a peak of thirty-eight hundred CFS, um, which was the highest since the ninety-seven flood, so. But everything held and, uh, and we were able to make it through that period, it was kind of, it was brief. Um, it shot straight up and then it shot straight down. Um, the Walker River Irrigation District has been doing an amazing job managing, uh, the flows in and out of the, or out, I should say, of the, the reservoirs and making sure that, um, it doesn't put too much pressure on things down here. So we're really grateful for their partnership with us, so, um. And I just want to echo what everyone else has said, you know, I really want to thank our staff, who, um, Dustin and his group have been putting in a ton of hours. Wanna thank Shayla and, um, Human Services Department for their help, Louis, uh, Carriola, for his help, and Josh, the District Attorney's Office, um, really just, it's been a real team effort. There's no way I could take credit for what has been done and, and everything, um, Taylor, obviously, and, and Doug with facilities, so really, I mean, all of the different departments have been involved and been helping, uh, the Sheriff's Department. Sorry if I missed anybody, but, um, just really impressed that the way everyone's come together to, to address that. And so, um, they're working on a project today, um. There was an issue, uh, up north of here, um, on Sierra, off of Sierra Way, um, flood culvert and, uh, part of the road is collapsed. So they're working on, um, fixing that and, uh, will be today and tomorrow, trying to, trying to make sure that gets done, they're having to build a kind of a road around it while they, while they, uh, dig up the road and replace the culvert, so, um, that's why Mr. Holman had to take off. He had to go get some road closed signs out there, because about half the road fell in the hole, so. Um, so that's what, uh, what we're working on at the moment, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Keller, any questions? No. Okay, uh, yes, and, and thank, thank you to everybody again, um, know that, uh, Mr. Holman's been out there every day, as are, are, are you ever present. Uh, and I also forgot to thank you for the tour last, um, after the last meeting. Uh, did learn a lot, um, you've also been very responsive to, uh, problems in the south end of the county. We've had some flooding issues there, basically water rolling down the canyons and onto the dirt roads and washing out the, some of the other residential roads. Just people have to understand, you know, when it, we have these flash rains and the snow melting and everything else. Uh, I'm just surprised that the road department has been out to, uh, like up our, our day lane a couple of times to make it passable. And then, of course, it floods again and they're back out there having problems, but, uh, do appreciate all the effort that's throughout the county. So thank you again.
That is something I forgot to mention, um, that we have been doing with some flash flooding issues throughout the county based on the thunderstorms that we've been having. There have been issues in Dayton, Stagecoach, Silver Springs, uh, down here, um, the road department has done an amazing job. I know there was a kind of a mudslide mud wash over, um, Ramsey Weeks a couple of days ago. Um, just after I went through there, actually, um, and Taylor and, and, um, Jason from the road department were on, on scene right away and then Jason had his, the greater out and they got it cleared right away, so. They've been working to tackle those problems and I just ask that, um, people be patient as we, as we get to these things. Um, and we've received a lot of phone calls, you know, about individual roads and whatnot, and, um, we have been, um, we've been trying to get to things and prioritizing things as, as they come up, um, but I just ask the folks because we, we are spread pretty thin based on everything that's, that's going on and everything that needs to be accomplished.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yes. Oh, Commissioner Keller, your hand.
Yeah, I, I just, after, uh, Andrew had what he had to say, I just want to thank Andrew for getting so quick on that, uh, on that Washington, Ramsey Weeks, uh, that phone call came to me, the email did, and thank you for getting on top of that so quick.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the community just needs to know that we're, we're hoping that things will dry out and then some of the mitigation can occur to hopefully not have these things happen in the future, but right now, we just gotta keep on the basics, and that is keep the roads open the best way we can, and, uh, that's pretty much clear the mud and try to divert the water until it starts slowing down on us, we can't do much more than to keep up, uh, just above the water. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Haskin. Uh, six, eight, we're going to item nine, which is elected officials reports, um, elected officials. I see the sheriff moving on his way up. And your deputy behind you?
Yeah, uh, Lyon County Sheriff Brad Pope, for the record, wanna hurry up and get her to Kids Day at the park for two o'clock, so. Uh, brief report, uh, we conducted our saturation patrol in Silver Springs last week. Um, three NHP troopers participated with us, conducted a hundred fifteen stops, eleven arrests. Uh, ranging from misdemeanor traffic violations to, uh, felony arrests, including, um, an outlaw suspect who absconded from sentencing from armed, the armed robbery of, uh, the Silver Strike in Silver Springs. So he was apprehended, um, it's gonna be a small one tomorrow with NHP and our guys, they, they wanna do another uh, minor saturation of Fernley. Uh, we, we'd hate to see it, uh, do a saturation control the next time we work our way around there, six, seven months later. So NHP's on board with us and they're, they're gonna start working closely with us, give us more manpower, start hitting some other areas. Uh, guys have been pretty busy, we've, uh, been speaking at a lot of public events, had at least four, uh, senior citizen workshops the last couple of weeks with, uh, preventing fraud. Trying to reduce the amount of, uh, fraud that's going on in our senior community, because they seem to be the most heavily targeted. Educate them on, uh, a lot of scams that are going around Lyon County and, and just nationwide. Uh, other than that, we had two more, uh, already certified deputies, uh, finished field training, they're out on the street on their own, they don't need to go to the academy. Uh, so that's good, getting the man, uh, manpower back up, four more scheduled to get off at the end of this month. And bolster our numbers and we're sending four to the academy in July, so. Overall, we're looking at a plus eight, uh, from where we started on the streets, so. Still down eleven or twelve positions, uh, recruitment and hiring is, is going well, we have another category one. Peace officer that we, uh, stole from the Yarrington Police Department coming over, uh, he starts June twenty-sixth, so. Other than that, uh, everyone's doing a good job, everybody's busy, getting ready for the summer rush. And things seem to be going well.
Questions, Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you, Chairman Hockday, um. You got, first of all, appreciate those saturations, that's really an awesome deal. And then, uh, I got to see you firsthand with some of those kids and it's great to see you and your, some of your cohorts, uh, jumping in and helping out with those kids programs, you're, albeit Yarrington football, um, but that's, uh, that's a, that's a great deal to step up and, and do more with, with those young kids, so I just want to pat you on the back for that as well.
Just thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Ditto.
Commissioner Keller, hands up?
Thank you, uh, I hope you're getting the same phone calls I am, Brad, uh, I'm getting phone calls from people that are are very happy with the Sheriff's Department right now, they're enjoying those, uh, saturations, it's keeping everybody in line again for a little bit. And so I've gotten some phone calls thinking that, uh, we're part of the Sheriff's Department, but we're not, but the compliments are, are coming to you. Thanks.
Here we are, we're, uh, the command staff, uh, even the deputies on the street are noticing the, uh, the public support has increased greatly and, and, uh, that really helps with our retention and, and the deputies' attitude, so. It's, uh, been great all over the county as far as public support goes.
Hey, well, thank you very much for everything you're doing, and, um, I guess I'll be over the jail on Monday doing an inspection, so we'll see how they're doing on Monday, and I imagine they'll be just as good as they always have been. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys are good.
And nine A is report only, technology, oh, what's that? Oh. That's it, yeah, that's the, uh, technology report, right?
For the record, twelve lines, line county assessor, good afternoon, commissioners. Um, per NRS two fifty dot zero eight five, I sent the following technology report. Uh, projected expenditures for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, uh, twenty twenty-four, and with that, I'll.
Any questions, Commissioner Jacobson?
I believe in reading the report, there was seventy-three thousand spent on that one item, and that's, is that a yearly expense, or is that?
Uh, pictometry imagery is my aerial imagery, um, software, um, well, company that actually flies for us, we have five different, um, uh, market areas within the county that I consider market areas, um, and given the size of Lyon County, it's a little over. Um, and given the size of Lyon County, it's a little over two thousand mile, square miles. Um, I can only fly a certain part. So for instance, this, this particular, um, cost of seventy-nine thousand was for Mason Valley. And that was flown in, uh, late, late October. And I believe, um, coming up this October, it'll be Highway fifty corridor. So, um, I, um, it's, it's a five-year flight pattern plan. Um, this one happens to be the most expensive. Um,
Right. Cause there's so many beautiful things to see in Smith Valley.
Yes, and yes, and we, so we, we flew, uh, Smith Valley and City of Arlington last year and, um, they, it helps us tremendously with that.
Right on. I was just curious because I
No, that's, that's, that's a good question. That's a, that's a chunk of money and, um,
Roger that. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Blines.
Any other questions? Thank you for the update. And nine B is technology report for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four from the, uh, Lyon County Recorder. We are up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Anita Talbot, Lyon County Recorder. For the record, um, per NRS two four seven point three oh six three. Um, I submit the following technology report.
Any questions on the report? No. Oh, Commissioner Jacobson.
I've got six written down here. No, I'm just teasing. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. And now we're going to go to item ten, appointed official reports. Mr. Carriola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Louis Carriola, Community Development, uh, Director. Uh, just a few updates. One on staffing. I know you've been hearing from me quite a bit on this. Uh, but I'm excited to say in the twenty-sixth of this month, we'll have the backfill for my spot. Uh, we were able to hire a senior planner. Uh, we'll also have our buildings plans examiner starting that date as well. So by the time we see you again, uh, Community Development will be fully staffed. That's great news for us. Yeah, I've been seeing a bit of an uptick finding entitlements. Um, so I certainly can use the relief. We've also made some progress on doing research for code enforcement. So I'm hoping to have that on an agenda relatively soon, potentially as soon as, as July, uh, but I will make an effort to try and meet uh, with some of the Commissioners who have, have expressed interest in this topic, uh, before that. So I know, uh, Commissioner Hendricks and, and Chair Hockday have spoken about that and we can split them up to make sure we're not, um, violating any open meetings. And, uh, I believe that's it. Any questions?
Questions?
No, but thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Jacobson.
I know with that, the housing, um, what was that term we used earlier with, uh, yes. Um, if there's ever anything we can do to put into policy to help you out with code enforcement, bring it forward and I will be all for it every time. So
Thank you.
Um, if, if there's something that we can do to help on that end, um, kind of as a preventative, um, item, put it on the agenda and let's roll with it because that's a tough job. Um, and very thankless, I'm sure, the number of dogs you encountered, cranky people and so I appreciate that.
It is. Uh, Officer Johnson does an exceptional job considering the fact this, of course, is a very large geographical county for, for one officer. So, um, I'm hoping that the updates that we will propose or maybe eventually get input from, from this board, uh, to incorporate into our new ordinance will give us a, a better function and something more predictable. And then as a result, something that actual enforcement actions instead of fortunately now is, is a lot of letters and sometimes frustration.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Haskin, did you want to say anything about that, uh, code enforcement issue at all? No? Okay.
No, no, sir. Not at this time.
I, I just, I know that we've requested a workshop sometime in the future to discuss things. So I just, uh, might think about that.
I believe that, that is what Mr. Carriola was referring to is, uh, scheduling of a workshop, uh, um, as, uh, he pointed out, maybe as soon as the July meeting, but, um, got to finalize a few other things.
Right. Well, I know there's a lot on the plate right now. So July is, you know, and, and we're going to have, uh, three commissioners out for the, um, uh, Mako. And so, I mean, there's a lot going on in July. I'm not sure if, if we're going to be able to fit in something like that the next month and a half, but as the sooner the better. I just, I know that there's, you know, flooding and all kinds of other emergency issues, but I certainly want to see that happen as, as soon as possible.
Absolutely. Yeah. We've been working on it and, uh, like either July or August, but we want to, we want to see some, some movement on that as well. So
Thank you.
We'll have to get it to you as soon as we can.
Great. Any other appointed officials want to talk? Yes, no?
Mr. Homestead is online.
Mr. Homestead, yep. I saw that hand earlier. I just didn't want to skip him here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Doug Homestead, Cilley's Director for the Record. Um, I attended the Smith Valley Cav meeting, um, last week, last Wednesday night. Um, they seem to be a really good functioning group right now. Um, we've been busy at Fairgrounds on the Harper paving project, uh, bucking shoots. And now we're working on the big barn, trying to get it ready for the, um, event. Um, we're going to start moving the district court offices, um, to the old courthouse on the twenty-second next week. Uh, district court remodel job will start the contractors moving in on June twenty-sixth to start that project, which will take about a year. And, um, we kind of kicked the show off at Mount House the other day. Me and Josh went up there to meet with architect to try to get a price from them on, um, what their fees will be so we can hopefully get them someone under contract so we can get a design, uh, done and get working on that project. And that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Questions for Mr. Homestead? No. Commissioner Keller, any question? No? Okay. Thank you for your report. And do we have any other appointed official reports?
Dave.
Yes. Commissioner Keller.
You, you keep asking for, uh, for, uh, answer from me. I can't unmute myself fast enough. So I, I don't have time. I'll, I'll put my, uh, hand up if I'm gonna talk.
All right. That
Thank you.
Sounds like a plan. I just don't want to leave you out.
Nope. I'll, I'll put my hand up. Thanks.
All right. We'll go on to, uh, number eleven, Advisory Board Reports. Any Advisory Board Reports? Ms. Bernan? Nobody? Okay. And we will move down to the consent agenda, item twelve. I believe our items are twelve A through twelve V. And I see Mr. Haskin is stepping up. So, um, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing, any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed enacted upon separately during the meeting. So first I will go to Commissioners. Do you wish to pull any items?
No, but I'm ready to make a motion.
Hold on, uh, since you stepped up, Mr. Haskin.
There, yeah, there's a few. Um, so twelve I and twelve J, I just need to provide some clarification. So I'd ask that we pull those. Those and then, um, I know we had a request to pull twelve M. So.
And, and twelve F also. There was a correction to the minutes. They've already made the correction, but apparently we have to pull it to approve the revisions.
All right. So we have twelve F, twelve I, twelve J, and twelve M.
With that, Chairman Hockday, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda pulling twelve I, twelve J, twelve M, and twelve F.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those
Um, before we do that, we got to do public comment.
Oh, public comments. Um, does anybody else on the public wish to pull anything? I know that we've had one for twelve M. And I was looking at having the public pull. I don't see anybody on Zoom and nobody stepping up. So uh, we've got the motion and all those in favor of the motion pulling all the items except for twelve F, I, J, and M. Say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. Motion passes five zero. So let's go back to the first one here for possible action. Approve the minutes from the Board of County Commissioners Emergency Meeting held on May twentieth, twenty twenty-three. I believe that Commissioner Henderson made a, uh, found a couple of minor errors. And so if I have a motion on that.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hendricks.
We both have it.
Okay. I'll give credit to everybody. Good job. So any discussion on that? Commissioners, public?
You might want to just, uh, Andrew Haskin for the record, you might just want to note the changes that were made.
Yeah, the changes were made and, uh,
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've got the backup already for, with the corrections. Think that was distributed and also left out on the table for everybody.
Perfect.
So we have all that information.
Except there's another mistake. Sorry. There is, uh,
So do we want to, um,
Can, can we note the mistake? Okay.
You can vote, you can note in the state, uh, and I'll have it corrected when I need to meet.
Okay. The Mr. Chair, if, if if I may. Oh, yeah. What is what is listed on here as item twenty-eight? We should be item eight. And it says that you adjourned the meeting, but I was running that meeting because of your poor internet connectivity. So I actually
Yep.
And this is still in the May twentieth?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we caught that at the beginning. We just didn't catch it at the end.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
We did.
And then Chairman Hockaday with that, I'm going to abstain from voting on approving this as I was absent.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
So I'll take a stab at it if you're ready.
You bet.
Might want to do public comment first.
Yep. Public comment. Anybody else have a public comment on the, uh, May twentieth? Minutes.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we approved the minutes from the May twentieth, twenty-three meeting of the County Commission with the correction to item eight.
Second? Where do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Hendricks. And I believe everybody's talked all they want on twelve F. So let's go ahead and call for a vote on that with the, uh, one abstaining, uh, Commissioner Jacobson who was absent. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. So we have a four zero with one abstention. All right. We'll move on then to twelve. Twelve. You don't miss that?
Well, I, oh, yeah.
Why did I, that's what this edge too soon. Well, I, for possible action, accept and award the twenty-twenty-three Regional Transportation Commission RTC pavement maintenance project to Sierra Nevada Construction, who is the lowest in responsive bidder in the amount of three million, nine hundred eighty-one thousand, seven dollars. And approve a ten percent contingency for any unforeseen issues and allow staff to sign related documents.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. My comments are actually relating to both twelve I and twelve J, but you want to take action on them separately. Um, I just wanted to point out that, um, we are bringing these items before you, before they have been approved by RTC. So, uh, which is fine. We can do that. But, uh, in your motion, please, um, say that it's subject to approval, um, by RTC. Should that be the motion that the board chooses? So, um, that's all.
Okay. So we're going to go with twelve I first. Yes. Oh.
Thank you. Um, I, I just want to, yeah, because, you know, I sit on RTC and when I saw this, it, it rang a bell and I should have reached out to you before it. I'm sorry, but I just want to make sure that the DA, that we're good with that. Yes. Okay. Just want to make sure we're on firm legal ground.
Okay. So what I meant was we go twelve I.
Right.
Discussion. Any Commissioners have anything further on twelve I? Public comment on twelve I. Seeing none, then I will, uh, have a motion for twelve I and remember subject to approval of.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I moved that we accept an award to twenty-twenty-three Regional Transportation Commission pavement ma- maintenance project to Sierra Nevada Construction, who is the lowest and responsible bidder in the amount of three million, nine hundred eighty-one thousand, seven dollars. And approve a ten consent, ten percent contingency for any unforeseen issues and allow staff to sign related documents with the condition that this item be approved by the Regional Transportation Commission at their meeting, which is scheduled for, I believe, the twenty-first.
Okay. So I have a motion. And a second, second. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
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 Uh, I think I did.
Okay. Yeah.
Anybody opposed? So passes five zero. Then we'll go on to twelve J for possible action. Approve contract with Loomis and Associates in the amount of hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred dollars for inspections and testing services for Lyon County RTC twenty-twenty-three pavement maintenance project for Sub- Stagecoach and Silver Springs area. Mr. Haskin.
Same, same as the last item.
Same is same. Okay. Uh, any comments from Commissioners? No. Any public comment? Seeing none, I will look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we approve a contract with Loomis and Associates in the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred dollars for the inspections and and testing services for Lyon County RTC twenty-twenty-three pavement ma- maintenance project for Stagecoach in the Silver Strings area contingent upon passage by the Regional Transportation Commission of this item on their March twenty-first agenda.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes.
And Mr. Chair, for the record, I believe I misspoke and said March. I meant June.
My second still stands, sir.
All right. Now we're going to move on to twelve M for possible action to approve a master services agreement amendment number two to extend the end date from June thirty, twenty twenty-three to June thirty, twenty twenty-four for technical support for development of a conceptual county lands bill and on land, on public lands and natural resources support with Resource Concepts Incorporated, RCI. Uh, Mr. Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. Um, yeah, so this item, um, is to extend our existing contract with Resource Concepts and till next June. Um, you'll remember, I think I brought a contract extension forward in November, December, um, originally, I think it was in that timeframe. Um, and, uh, just the project is that, uh, the lands bill project has moved slower than that. So we would need more time for that. I do want to point out that, that this contract, um, does cover some other things. So, um, in additions to, in addition to work on the lands bill, um, they provide some technical support for issues dealing with public plans. Um, there's two letters, uh, on our agenda later on, um, that were, uh, those, those comments were both prepared by RCI, um, as a part of this contract. So, um, I, I do want to point out that this does not just cover the, the lands bill stuff. With that, I can answer any questions.
Questions, Commissioners? Any questions? Uh, Mr. Keller, your hands up on this one.
Yeah, I'm just curious. How much longer do you think this is going to keep going? I, I'd really like to get this lands bill up before the Senate and Congress pretty soon.
Um, Andrew Haskin for the record. I, I don't have an estimate. I, you know, I, I would like to see us bring something forward, you know, so we're, we're we the county staff met with RCI about a month ago to kind of refine our proposal as far as what the county is interested in as far as lands. Um, and so they're still kind of working on that map and trying to finalize that, that, um, those are the lands that, that Lyon County would need for county purposes. Um, and so I, you know, and so I, you know, and speaking with Mister Drew, Representative from RCI. Um, maybe sometime in August, we could bring bring that forward and um be ready to get things moving. But I, but maybe don't hold me to that number, that date just yet.
Thank you. I I just want to get it as fast as possible. We need to get our stuff. Other other people are getting theirs in and I want to get ours in.
I completely agree.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I just wanted to to touch on what Mister Haskin touched on about the services RCI provides us, the the Landsville is just part of that and I've had the privilege of working with RCI for a number of years. And uh, we couldn't have a better public lands resource on on our team than than RCI. So I look forward to continuing our relationship for a long time.
Yeah, my question would be uh on this contract. From my understanding, it's kind of a pay as you go. As they do work, we pay for the work. It isn't uh, you know, so much per year, no matter what. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a, Andrew Haskin for the record, it's a time and material contract, so yeah.
Okay. Uh, second, you know, we keep talking about let's let's hurry up, let's get to Congress with all this uh lands bill stuff. Uh, as I recall, we've never reached out to the public yet. And I believe there's a significant number of people who would like to have comments before all of this goes up to uh higher headquarters, so to speak. And I would hope that uh we would make sure that that's all part of the process before we jump the gun and start sending stuff into Congress.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. So is that all for the commissioners? Public comment?
Just, just one more.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you again, Mister Chair. Um, yeah, I I agree that there's a lot of interest in moving to Landsville along at a at a rapid pair of I won't say rapid, but in a timely manner. However, to me, it's more important to get it right than to get it fast.
I agree and Andrew Haskin for the record, I mean, something that, you know, if we were to bring it back forward in August, it'd really be to kind of figure out which direction we'd be going down. And then we put together maps and stuff based on that and then take it public, so. Just kind of third party version.
And and I know that when that gets agendized, that the word will get out to everybody that might be concerned as far as uh every part of the county. So that sounds uh good to me. Uh, back to, well, we've got Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, I just want to clarify what I was talking about. I'm not trying to get the thing through as fast as possible, but there's certain things in Lion County, and I'm talking about Lion County's part of the Landsville that I wanted to make sure that we got ours taken care of. So that's what I was talking about, is trying to get, make sure that we uh do what we need to do quickly.
Thanks. I totally agree with that. Uh, Commissioner Keller, thank you. So uh, public comment?
Good afternoon, Leslie Sinay Smith Valley, representing the citizens to protect Smith Valley. Um, we're not opposed to the extension per se, and we want to thank Mister Drew for actually answering questions as they've come up for us. And things I'm gonna say, I actually don't fault to Mister Drew. I just want to make that clear. I'm encouraged to hear that there's more work being done on it and that will be coming public soon, but at the end of the day, we're, you know, two years in and the community has not been given a complete list of all the parcels, why there's a need to obtain them and a complete cost benefit analysis uh that outlines short and long term financial obligations. And just yesterday at the Hud Bay Open House, uh, we looked at the new map that they have put together for what their request is going to be and learned that it's about ten thousand acres less than their initial, it was the initial map of forty one thousand acres. But they told us very clearly only eighteen thousand of that is for them. The rest is for two other companies that wanted to be included. Um, are there really going to be three different mine projects up there in North Smith Valley? Why is this being requested as one parcel when there may be three companies involved? And we just really think this needs further disclosure and discussion. Um, and also the recent map that had been released has a portion in Douglas County. They told us yesterday that Lion County has asked them to remove the Douglas County portion because apparently they think it will complicate matters. But our question when we heard that was, when did this discussion take place and with whom? It, this seems to be an example of decisions being made when there hasn't been any public discussion and no public input as to the overall needs and wants of the community. Um, is time being wasted on things that may not end up everybody wanting to move forward on? So we think the community needs to know more about the next steps before extending the contract. And just for the record, the citizens to protect Smith Valley will continue to oppose any public land for mining in the Landsville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, two.
Okay. You online. All right, we've got uh Tony from Dayton. You're on.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and thank you, Commissioners for the record, Tony Stevenson, Dayton. Uh, since the beginning of this project, I've voiced many concerns that have to deal with infrastructure. Who's gonna pay for it? Benefits from it? Why do we need to do it? Whole host of issues. Knowing that a big chunk of this lands bill is going to benefit a multi-billion, and that's billion with a B, dollar mining concern is kind of disturbing. Um, especially since it's going to be right on top of the old Anaconda Mine according to their latest maps. Also, many of the parcels being cut out that are being proposed, as I understand it, because we don't have an accurate lands bill map. Many of the parcels are going to be for developers. Why are we, the taxpayers, being asked to subsidize developers? That's not fair. That's not fair to the folks of Lion County. If we need a lands bill where land actually has to be transferred to Lion County for the sake and the benefit of all the residents of Lion County, that's one thing. But to have a lands bill that's gonna help rich people get richer, that's not okay. We need more than that. And I really hope moving forward as we keep paying um RCI that that's considered. Now, it's not that I have anything against RCI, I don't. But we haven't even heard how much money we've spent to date and how much more money we expect to spend. It seems like we have a blank check for this. I hope you folks take this into consideration and put the focus back on the people of Lion County, not on the developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bernan.
Uh, good morning or good afternoon, I guess it is now, Amanda Bernand, B R I N N A N D. Um, at a advisory board meeting that was quite a while ago. Um, it was explained that there are some parcels in Stagecoach and and Dayton and Mount House that, um, although the entire parcel is shown, the county is only looking at getting a small piece adjacent to Highway fifty for right of way. And there is concerns because where these parcels are um of development, there's development concerns. And also, there was a lot of concerns about public access still, as a lot of these parcels in in Silver Springs, Stagecoach, Dayton, Mount House. There are a lot of people that use them to recreate on, and they're concerned that they'll now be blocked for them from them. I think that we need to see a map before we move forward of which parcels they're acquiring for just a small piece of right of way and what will happen to the remainder of that parcel. Uh, we were told that um RCI could not produce a map just showing that right of way. I'm guessing that's a limit of the contract you have because I know that's not a limit of RCI. Um, I have utilized that company before. So it would be good to see what parcels. If there is a parcel that is only for a right of way acquisition, then why would the entire forty acre parcel be um in the lands bill and what would the rest of it be used for? And if the county is just planning on keeping it for open space and that needs to be disclosed. And some of the other things are um you know, if we, if the county does sell the parcels, the the environmental, the NEPA costs involved with that, um you know, that should also kind of be disclosed too, because those can get very high. Uh, so I do think that there needs to be a lot of changes done to these maps as um this moves forward and also ensuring that the public is involved as I I know a while ago, we had had no public speak, uh, public meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, uh, I'll look for a motion on twelve M.
Mister Chair, I moved that we approve a master services agreement amended amendment number two to extend the end date from June thirtieth twenty twenty three to June thirtieth twenty twenty four for technical support for development of a conceptual county lands bill and on public lands and natural resources support with Resource Concepts Incorporated.
Second.
Hey. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero for continuation of the contract. Um, that takes care of twelve. Looks like we've already done thirteen A, so I'm looking on the regular agenda uh at thirteen B for presentation only, a presentation of the business impact statement that was prepared. For the proposed changes of the Lion County Development Application Fee Schedule for Conditional Use Permits and Approval Condition Amendments in the accord, in accordance with NRS two thirty seven point zero three zero to two thirty seven point one fifty inclusive. Yes, Mister Carriola.
Thank you, Mister Chair, Lewis Carriola, Community Development Director. Uh, this will be briefed. We develop it or oh, excuse me, pulling up the presentation. So a business impact statement was prepared in accordance with NRS provisions for a proposed uh fee schedule change to community developments, development application. Uh, we noticed an inconsistency in the current fees wherein a conditional use permit is one thousand five hundred dollars uh but an approval to a condition amendments, so that would just be an amendment to an approved C P or tentative map would be thirty five hundred dollars. Uh, in other words, one would be more inclined to start the process entirely over with a new C U P rather than amend it existing. Uh, so the proposal um is outlined in the business impact statement, which is included in your packet. I do have slides, but I imagine you probably don't need to see them all uh is to change the conditional use permit fee from one thousand five hundred to two thousand five hundred and to reduce approval condition amendment applications from thirty five hundred down to two thousand. On May twenty second, twenty twenty three, uh, we sent down an email to uh potential businesses that would be or entities that would be affected, in this case, Nevada Contractors Board, Nevada Builders Alliance and three chambers of commerce, Yarrington, Dayton, and Silver Springs. Uh, we did not receive comment back. I have all the slides here as a business impact statement, but again, I'm not sure you'd need to see them. Uh, notably, you would be um seeing this a second time for the fee resolution at the July sixth meeting available if you have any question. Oh. What? My apologies, I've been informed by the county manager that uh part of the presentation for the business impact fee is to assess um whether or not there were um effects to the county and the assessment for the business impact statement is no, there would not be. Yeah. Thanks.
Questions? No questions? Okay, as a presentation only, so thank you for your presentation.
Thanks.
Uh, thirteen C was pulled, thirteen D for possible action, prove resolution certifying and levying tax rates in Lion County for the twenty twenty three through twenty twenty four fiscal year. I always hate that word tax, levying tax. Now, go ahead.
Josh Foley, Lion County Comptroller for the record, so I've received all of the uh budgets from the final budgets from the different taxing entities in Lion County. This is a summary of the tax rates aboard County Commissioners by statute required to take action after the Nevada Tax Commission takes action. Unfortunately, the Department of Taxation took my last brain cell last time we brought this up. And uh, they don't want to wait until after November twenty or I should have said March.
Right?
Till June twenty fifth, uh, so or for the first meeting in July, they wanted you guys to hold a special meeting. I don't want to make you guys be here any more than you asked. So if you will approve this item, subject to approval by the Nevada Tax Commission on the twenty fifth of June, then we will be good.
Commissioners?
Otherwise, we have another meeting?
Otherwise, they want you to meet again, because I used to do the first meeting in July and that's when I lost my last brain cell.
When you speak in terms like that, we listen.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. Uh, that was a very valid point. Um, moving, Commissioner Hendricks. Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Keller. And I certainly agree. Do we have a motion for? Oh, I'm sorry, public comment? I didn't want to talk about accidents. I just want to get through taxes. I just don't like them, so.
I hear you.
Um. All right, I see no, well, I see Commissioner Keller, go ahead, sir.
I just have to raise my hand in order to vote.
Okay, for vote.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution certifying and leveling the tax rates in Lion County for two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four fiscal years.
Okay, do I have a second?
Contingent upon approval by the Nevada Department of Taxation?
Contingent upon approval by the Nevada Tax Commission.
Second, so I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson and second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Right? Any opposed? Passes five zero. Thirteen E for possible action, prove resolution, transfer appropriations within the general road and capital improvement fund budgets of Lion County.
Josh Foley, Lion County Comptroller for the record, so this is a summary of all of the actions the board has previously taken, plus some additional areas where we've had changes between fiscal years. We ordered a vehicle in the prior fiscal year, didn't get it to this year, so the budget didn't follow naturally. And so this is a to move the budget around, um doesn't change the total budget in any way, shape or form, it just moves from contingency in the uh capital improvements fund, it just moves it between functions, which has to be done by the Board of County Commissioners, so that we stay compliant by function.
Chairman Hockaday, it's my understanding we do this every year, correct?
Yes.
Uh, with that, I'm ready to make a motion.
Any public comment? And I think we're ready for the motion.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to transfer appropriations within the general road general road and impasse there quick enough and capital improvements fund budgets of Lion County.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Jacobson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hendricks seconds. Yeah, all those in favor say it. Uh, did cover.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes five zero. Thirteen F for possible action, prove revision to section nine point one one disaster area declaration of Lion County personal policy, personnel policy to provide administrative leave and other options for county employees under certain circumstances during a disaster area or state of emergency declaration. And Mister Foley, you're on again.
Josh Foley, Lion County Comptroller, and just so you know, section nine dot one one was already for uh disasterary declarations, it's appropriate, it seems like, but uh for nine one one. We were doing a number of discussions at a leadership team level uh between various members of what happens and God forbid this happens and hopefully all the work that the board has previously authorized keeps us from being in the situation for the summer at the very least. But what happens if we have to shut down a county building due to a state of emergency or a disaster should should the employees who cannot afford to go without a paycheck have to use their leave or some of them don't have leave if they're fairly new employees for six months? Under state law, you're not allowed to have sick or vacation leave as a government employee. It's an NRS two forty five, if you want to have some fun looking for it. Um, anyways, should they have to go without a paycheck just because a a state of emergency closed down and they can't actually either physically get to work? A state of emergency closed down and they can't actually either physically get to work. Or the building is closed down and there can't be work performed there. So that was the, the impetus for this is to give the. Give those employees, provided there's budget dollars available. And subject to the county manager's discretion to make sure that it is actually appropriate. To pay those, those people up to forty hours administrative leave as needed, and it's not just for those circumstances. If there's a immediate threat to their personal residence, uh, family member themselves during that time period. Uh, there's a few other provisions in there like that, and then if we have to relocate services to, let's just say. We have to close the building down that we're in. We don't have sufficient facilities to move them all to the county road yard here in Yarrington or another building perhaps here in Yarrington. Depending on the emergency, we may have to relocate those offices between Dayton, Silver Springs, and Fernley, and should those employees again. Uh, if the county manager authorizes. Be able to be reimbursed for the additional mileage, um, that through no cause of their own, they're out of pocket for doing that. Uh, again, just temporary measures during the state of emergency for that, and again, subject to budget. And so that was what this was intended to, to be proposed to the board to give you that option during, to discuss.
Commissioner Jacobson. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. The mileage reimbursement. Is there any provision in there that the, they're only paid the difference between what they're currently driving to the additional distances?
Yes, sir, that's exactly the language, because, um. Amy Hagan read your mind and said that's how we should put this in, because Commissioner Henderson is going to ask. Seriously, seriously, she put that in there exactly as you just proposed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hendricks? Yeah, I, I agree with everything, the one thing that I did catch though is it says or delegate, you know, county manager. Um, paragraph three. I. I think it should be left up to the county manager, I mean, they're going to discuss this with, uh, their, their section chiefs and such as that. I, I just can't imagine when the county manager wouldn't be able to make a decision on authorizing a paid administrative leave. Because you're going to coordinate with everybody that's in charge. And then you're going to make a decision unless we don't have a county manager, but then you're going to have someone. That's going to be appointed interim.
Right.
Uh, I just, I saw that and said, I. I don't want the county manager to always make that decision.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the records, yeah, so I mean, I would intend to make that, that decision. Most of the time, there could be a couple of circumstances where I'm out in the field having to coordinate the emergency and just. I need to delegate that to, um, you know, Mister Foley or HR, um, in order to. Carry that out, uh, so, um, there could come the rise of situation where I'm just. Off dealing with whatever emergency it is and, and wouldn't have. Have the time, like I said, for the most part, I would, I would maintain that and keep that up.
Yeah, I just didn't see that as an emergency situation, you're going to make that decision. Sometime and they're going to be able to be given that time off, but, um.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can provide you a very hypothetical situation, let's just say that, um, you know, our emergency repair. Didn't hold up and, and town flooded and I had to go deal with the coordination of. Trying to get that fixed, but we also had the situation going on here, it's possible that. That I would have to delegate that.
Okay.
Well, Chairman Hockaday, if I may, um, there may be a, I don't know if this happened, maybe. A maternity leave or paternity leave, whatever it's called, and, or on vacation and out of, out of the area. Um, I don't see Miss, Mister Haskin just passing this responsibility onto somebody without. Without something. Of that nature, so I would, I would move that we keep that knee in there.
Okay. You had a comment?
Yeah, I, I do, thank, thank you, Mister Chair, um, I, I agree, I don't think, I. It's a very, very limited circumstances where this would be an emergency. That you would have to delegate it to, however, would you be open to language? Say the county manager or comptroller or HR director under the direction of the county manager? Just so we limit it to those two positions.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, now I, you know, I have perfect trust in everybody, it's. I just looked at that and said, hmm, when would we need to worry about that, but, uh, I, I certainly would look at, uh. Um, comptroller or HR.
All right, they have that, and asking that works for me.
Okay. So do we want to, um. I've got Commissioner Keller, go ahead.
Just before someone makes a motion, I'm leaning toward putting that comptroller on there too, just because I know how tidy he is with the money anyway, so. Be fine with that.
He, he was in mind when I saw that delegate, you know, that was kind of when I looked at that, I said, well, why isn't he doing that? Okay, I'm a comptroller first, so good, good, we're good.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller for the record, and I do appreciate the, the trust the board has. I, when I write policy language such as this, I like to leave it. A little less defined if possible, because there may come a time where. And we see this all the time in this, in Nevada revised statutes, they make a change here and they have to go through and figure out where else to change it. You may have an assistant county manager. Position created and you're going to have to go through and change your personnel policies to reflect that. Or if you leave it as delegate and just have the discussion with county manager, hey, keep that. Keep that, uh, circle tight if, if that's a concern for you, but. That type of policy language takes error of, if both of. We may be off at NACO somewhere, you never know, I mean, we've been at. At, uh, different counties and something happens. In theory, you have time to authorize that, in reality, the employees are going to be more concerned about. Where is my bread coming on my table, so they want that determination made fairly quickly on their behalf, so. I, if the board is all right with leaving it a little more broad, I think it. It lends itself for a policy statement where we don't have to go back and change it, but again, we can live with either. It's just a little easier to manage. If we just have the county manager be able to delegate.
I'm, I'm, I can accept your explanation, um.
I'm good.
If, if everybody else is good, then, um, we'll just leave it as is, I just want to bring that up and. Go from there, so do I have a, uh?
We do, yeah.
Can, uh, okay, Commissioner Keller is back up?
Well, I think he's ready.
Well, he's ready to vote, okay.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion to approve the revision to section nine point one one. Disaster area declaration of the Lyon County Personnel Policy to Provide Administrative Leave and Other Options for County Employees Under Certain Circumstances. During a disaster area or a state of emergency declaration as presented.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, a second by Commissioner Henderson, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes five zero. Uh, thirteen G for possible action review and approve comment letter to be submitted to the Bureau of Land Management concerning the proposed rule regarding conservation and landscape health. And all, see the review that letter, I looked at it, checked everything, looked really good to me. So, uh, county manager.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record, um, I did ask, um, Jeremy Drew from RCI to come, um. Just in case the board has any questions or would like an overview of the comments, um. RCI, uh, put together these, these comments for us, so. I'll turn it over to Jeremy if it's gotten.
Any question?
That you'd like to have?
For, for Jeremy? Questions? No?
Yeah.
Not there?
Not yet.
Oh, not yet, okay.
Hey, Jeremy.
Go ahead, Chairman.
Chairman and Commissioners, for your record, Jeremy Drew, uh, Principal Resource Specialist with Resource Concepts. Uh, we put this letter together after attending two workshops held by the BLM. One in person in Reno and one, uh, attended virtually. We've done similar letters, uh, drafted similar letters, one of which was adopted yesterday by White Pine County. In a very similar theme, we'll be drafting one more for Churchill County after this. Um, we've been in close coordination with Nevada Association of Counties on this. Uh, and there's a lot of other, uh, industry folks, uh, policy wonks like myself. Uh, that have, have gotten into this and have some real concerns that this could be shifting the way BLM operates, and so. Chairman, if you care to, I'm happy to step through the letter, if you all are comfortable with it. Uh, I'm happy to forego that and answer any questions that you may have, it's the pleasure of the board.
I'm very comfortable with it, uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
I'm very happy with what you've written and do appreciate it, um, my question is. After the, will this, during this comment period, a lot of counties are going to comment and everything, do you think it will have an effect?
Uh, that's a great question, Commissioner, and this is actually a question that I've, I've been asked by several of our clients. Um, I think the amount of volume that BLM is going to get, uh, with concerns on this is going to move the needle on the administrative side. Uh, more so than that, you'll notice that we have a pretty robust CC list. Uh, and I think there's a potential that this ends up, uh, in a legal arena, and I also think there's a potential this could end up in a congressional arena, and so. If it doesn't move the needle with the administration, uh, I would certainly think it would be, uh, taking notice in terms of. Any future legal proceedings or any, uh, debate, uh, that happens by Congress.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair, and Mister Drew, thank you, been outstanding work from RCI. Yeah, Na- NACO has submitted or has approved submitted a letter as well, uh, as in SLU PAC. One, one thing I want to note about SLU PAC's letter is they expanded their CC list to include all the members. Of the United States Senate and United States House Natural Resources Committee members. I would like to suggest that we do that as well, the point was made that they're the ones that are going to hear the bill, so they need to hear from outside of their states. That, that they're, and. That there is concern, there, there is a lot of concern with this proposal. Uh, there's a lot of opposition, I understand that there. Uh, may be bills introduced in both houses of Congress to prohibit the BLM from moving forward on that. And I don't have those bill numbers with me, but I will try to, to bring them to the next meeting and. Uh, I certainly encourage individual commissioners to reach out to our, our delegation. And in support of tho- those two bills. That's all, Mister Chair.
Commissioner Keller.
Uh, thank you, Jeremy, for, uh, coming down and, and, uh, presenting this. I, I'd have to agree with, uh, Commissioner Henderson that we need to get it out to as many people as we can that are going to. They need to have their eyes on this, so. Uh, I'd like to see that addressed. And, uh, I'm, I'm for this.
All right? I agree, read through it, appreciate the letter. Uh, public comment? Uh, seeing none, I'll take a motion on thirteen G.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve the comment letter to be submitted to the Bureau of Land Management concerning the proposed rule regarding conservation. And landscape health with the, the CC list expanded. To includes members of the United States Senate, United States House of Representatives, Natural Resource Committees.
Yeah, you got a hand up on public comment, came up a little late.
Okay, yep. Didn't catch that one at the time, so.
I'll, I'll second his motion, but we can still have a public comment.
Yeah, public comment, go ahead, Tony.
Yeah, thanks for the record, Tony Stevenson, Dayton, I would love to comment, but I can't find the letter. You know, in the past, I don't know when it was changed, we had hot links inside the agenda. That took us to pertinent documentation. Um. I can't find the letter. So, you know, when you ask for comment, you folks are the only one who knows what that letter says.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, I typically wouldn't comment on public comments, however, um, I do want to point out. So our new agenda software does not allow us to do hot links in there, however, the PDF itself is bookmarked. And if you scroll through the PDF, you can also find each agenda item with every piece of backup information as well. So it is, but it has been posted in accordance with state law.
So the backup is posted in according to a state law?
Correct.
Okay. Um. Thank you. Did you copy that, uh, Tony?
Yeah, I got what you're saying, you know, when you look at the PDF, it's total with three hundred and seventeen pages. I appreciate the technical difficulties, I understand. And it's not a criticism on anybody, it's just a change that I didn't realize. Had happened, so a little flat footed here.
Okay.
Sorry about that, can you give us?
No, right, you know. Appreciate it, um, you, for the next one. Uh, we've got the public comment, uh, taken care of. So I will look for a motion.
We have it.
You have a second?
That's right, motion and a second, I'm sorry. Um, getting late.
Yes, it is, so.
I would like to, uh, vote on this, and we've got the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thirteen H for possible action review and approve comment letter to be submitted to the Bureau of Land Management regarding the. Proposed rule for the by-state distinct population segment of Greater Sage grouse. An issue that keeps coming up year after year after year, so. Um, we want to go ahead and, um, present that, I again agree totally with the letter.
Chairman, for your record, Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist, Resource Concepts Incorporated. Uh, again, this is a little bit of a unique case in that we're commenting on something that was proposed clear back in twenty thirteen. Uh, US Fish and Wildlife Service has now twice. Tried to withdraw their proposed listing based on the good conservation work that's going on here locally, twice it has been remanded by federal courts. Uh, and so this is based on the second remand, uh, that are, they're essentially republishing the letter. In a nutshell, we're re- reiterating, uh, the fact that we'd like to see it withdrawn once again. Uh, based on information that's come forward, they had some specific requests that weren't posted in twenty thirteen in terms of information. Uh, we talked a lot about relying on the local area working group and technical working group of the by-state, uh, committees. Uh, to provide that, but we did provide some comment on critical. Um, habitat designations, uh, specifically as it gets down into the Dayton area and right up against. Uh, existing infrastructure and, and subdivisions and things of that nature. Um, so we did flag that, but more than anything, it's to reiterate our position taken in, in twenty thirteen. And again, request, uh, withdrawal of the proposed listing based on the local conservation efforts that are going on. Once again, happy to step through anything in particular or answer any question.
Questions?
No, I'm happy with it.
All right. Yeah, I, I just saying that I know that, uh, we had a meeting about the Sage grouse back in, uh, Smith's Valley years and years and years ago. And, um, uh, it's quite a turnout at the community center, uh, a lot of input, and I know that, um. All the counties involved have done an excellent job with the habitat. So hopefully we can kind of slide, slide this off the plate someday. So having said that, we're looking at thirteen H, uh, pop, a public comment on thirteen H. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve the comment letter to be submitted to the Bureau of Land Management regarding the proposed rule for the by-state. Distinct population segment of the Greater Sage grouse.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson, a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero, thirteen eyes complete. Uh, item fourteen, future agenda request, I'll start with Commissioner Hendricks.
Not at this time.
Commissioner Anderson.
Not at this time?
Mister Jacobson.
None at this time, sir.
Commissioner Keller's hand is up, unless you're voting to leave.
No, I, I do have a, a request, uh. So I attended the Silver Springs Advisory Board and it's been brought up on several occasions about the microphone system that's down there. And I would like, I, I, what brought it up is because you have it on the consent agenda for, uh, the parks. Down in, uh, Smith's Valley. Uh, I'd like to do something about the microphone setup, because what they're doing is where the chair is actually giving the microphone. To the person commenting, and then he, he doesn't have control over the, the meeting, so. We've got to do something different with the microphone, so I'd like to see. That somewhere along the line, I'll talk to Andrew or Doug about it, whatever needs to be done. And also, uh. There was talk about the finding the backup material. Is there any way we can put, uh, something in the agenda or, or when you pull up the agenda? That, uh, list where, where the items are on the page? You know, in parentheses or something like that in the backup? That'd be helpful. Thanks.
Um, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record, just to address that last piece, if you do download the, um, PDF. And you click on the bookmark section on the left hand, I think it's on the left hand side, right? Um, it'll pull up a, uh, a, um. It'll pull up a, a table of contents essentially, and you can click on that table of contents and it'll take you to that item. It's a little bit different than than what was done in the past. As has been brought up, there used to be a link in that agenda item that you could click. However, just with the change in software, we don't have the ability to do that anymore. And so, but it is bookmarked, it is in there, and if, you know, I'd be happy to to walk anyone.
Could we put an asterisk or something? I mean, just as a reminder where to go to get the information. I mean, if you go, again, you can look at the table of content and click on it, but not everybody looks at everything.
I will work with our agenda team and see if there's something.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, the, the way that Andrew said to do it, I download it and I, that's how I do it. But I didn't know if you don't download it, if you just read it off the screen, if it could be in parentheses. That's what I was talking about. That's all, and I'll I'll leave now.
Okay. Any other agenda requests? If not, we'll move on to the last commissioner comments on item fifteen. Commissioner Jacobson. I think Commissioner Hendricks.
I know it's been brought up a couple of times, but the Lyon County School Board, even though it's not under our purview. They have put forward a policy change to limit public comment three minutes at the beginning on any agenda item. And then at the end, you can have public comment again under things that are not on the agenda, but there's no longer going to be the ability to speak on any agenda item. So anybody who's concerned about that should come to the next meeting, June twenty seventh at Silver Stage Middle School.
Commissioner Henderson.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank this board for approving the the comments to the BLM on the two issues that we talked about. I'm really happy to see the more engagement in public lands issues. I think that Lyon County was kind of lacking on that for a bit. So I'm really glad to see the focus on that. And that is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Keller, any final comments?
No, I'm good.
Okay. And I'm good also. Well, I will make one public comment here about the Mason Valley Conservation District and Smith Valley Conservation District consolidating in a tour on the twenty seventh of June. It'll be in the morning. I've not received the agenda for that tour, but they will be going out and showing some of the jobs that they take care of obnoxious weeds. And they very are so much obnoxious weeds. The, they're noxious, all right? The other things that they work with and Dow and they clear out different areas to ensure that our wildlife are taken care of with getting rid of some of the problem areas in both Mason Valley and Smith Valley. So that's on the twenty seventh also, and should be information forthcoming on that. Sixteenth, public participation action be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. It is anticipated the public participation will be held at this time. Don't maybe return to it anytime during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item or agenda action item, but before the board takes any action afterwards, please print your name to clerk's desk. Any other public comment on Zoom or, Jeremy?
Chairman, just to build on what you said, for your record, Jeremy Drew, Resource Specialist with Resource Concepts. Just a quick update on a issue or an item we're working on for Lyon County, though it's through an NDF grant and not through the county individually. We continue to work with NDF and partners, including the Fire Protection Districts on community wildfire protection plans. That is about drafted. We wanted to make sure NDF and the local districts were on the same page in terms of the risk assessments and the risk categorizations and the wildland urban interfaces in each of the communities. As soon as we have a draft plan together, which we anticipate will be this month, we have a technical advisory committee that will review that, and then it will go out to public review with public workshops in each of the fire districts. So when that information comes available, we'll make sure that this commission has that. Because we would certainly welcome any input and engagement by not only the commissioners and Lyon County staff, but as well as the public. So just wanted to give you an update while I was here on that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll take care of that. Seventeen, do we have a closed session today?
Not today, Mr. Chair.
Outstanding. That being the case, it is two twenty-two, and I am going to adjourn our meeting.